Good evening, everyone. Welcome to a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Peersol to be held today, Tuesday, September 11, 2018. The time is 7:02. May I have a roll call, please?
Mary Moore.
Present.
Robert Gutierrez.
Present.
Richard Dunham.
Here.
Sonia Chavez.
Here.
Brenda Trevino.
Here.
Lana Nuss.
Here.
Galen Brach.
Here.
We have a forum, so let us stand for our invocation, as well as pledge allegiance to the few minutes before the invocation, just a moment of silence for all our victims from 9/11, to the families we would like to honor. Thank you very much. Mr. Praschel, sitting in the building, can you plead us in prayer, please?
Governor, Father, thank you once again, Lord God, for this opportunity to come together in this regular city council meeting. I plead to ask for your blessings upon our council meetings, our council, upon our city manager staff, Lord, and for the citizens here in the city of Peersol, Lord God, that you will just give us a vision, Lord God, to be able to prosper, to be able to get ahead, and quite frankly, Lord God, that you will just bless this city in such a way that it will truly become a city on a hilltop, Lord God. In Jesus' mighty name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
The citizens is a flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number four, citizen to be heard. Okay. "In accordance with 3.12 of the Peersol Municipal Charter, all meetings of the City Council and all committees there shall be open to the public, and the rules of the council shall provide that citizens of the city shall have a reasonable opportunity to be heard at any search meetings in regard to any matter they are considered. Any search meeting shall comply with all applicable laws of the state of Texas. Accordingly, the Peersol City Council has rules of courtesy in place for all persons in attendance at its meetings. The presiding public official shall at all times preserve order and decorum, and prevent personal reference to council members or the impugnance of personal motives. Citizen requesting to be heard shall sign in before the meeting is called to order, and shall be called upon in the order they signed in. The presiding official shall use discretion and time allowed a citizen to be heard. The citizen shall make every effort to be brief, get to the point, and to limit speaking time to no more than three minutes. Personal attacks shall not be allowed by any speaker." First one, please.
First up, Mr. Dave Ritchie.
Madam Mayor, Council, I am only here for another item tonight, but I want to bring up what I would call the point of argument we had together. I attend a lobbying, as y'all know, and I struggle trying to figure out who made a motion, who seconded a motion, who voted for a motion, who voted against a motion. I'm looking right at you. I watch her struggle, trying to figure out who's doing what, and just for, I don't know what's the proper word here, but just take the time to hold your hands up, make loud motions, loud seconds, so she can recognize them. Lord God, thank you.
Okay.
Second hand, Mr. Luciano Bonbora.
Well, I was advised to come here because of the ordinance that's going on with the trucks going through the, I guess, the regular roads, but as my understanding, load-through truck zone is like if a truck's going through with the load somewhere else, but I live in town, so I have to go through. You know, when my truck is empty, I mean, I'm not more than 35,000 pounds, but it's 15,000 and 15,000. It's no more than a regular duty carrying a gooseneck, you know, and that's how I make a living, and I got 10 acres, and for y'all to tell me where I can and cannot go, I think that's ridiculous. We pay taxes, which are going higher, and I don't see no, I don't see a change in nothing, you know, so, I mean, that's what I gotta say.
That's it? Okay, "New Business, 5A, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Sponsorship Requested by Dave Ritchie on behalf of the Free Old Vision Alive." Action item, entertain a motion to be discussed. May I have a second? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Mayor, Council, I hope I didn't have to say y'all too bad. Hold on. At the chair of the real vision, I've known even before the City Council, the one who may ask for y'all's sponsorship and also your support, as we were prepared for morning at the end, in the first Saturday in November this year, since November 6th. And what I'm asking for, if y'all will, is once we get the banner that the county has purchased to have it hung, and also remove it back to the offense, at the fair dates for the crossroads, the county is also going to provide some fair dates for the water stream. Y'all, in the vast, the vast trash bins, the personnel is very terrible. You've allowed us to use the city county for our group to sit under, to sign up people in, an electrician, and also the electricity that you've been trying to get hold of the city's electrician. I talked to him last year, he laid the force to his team, we're trying to do that here this year. I will be approaching the chief of police and his staff about security, they normally have a booth, so they've got a lot of officers there. I will be needing a letter from the mayor, sent to the city's active with tech stock for the closure of the Oak Street. I'll also need a letter from the chief Salinas for security, that he's basically saying that they haven't absolutely been no problem with us closing everything off. Just so y'all will know, and you can feel the vision live group doesn't know this yet, I've been talking with the Paris College roommate group program director about us kind of sorting the money for this, because we both have the same vision, both groups have the same vision, so that's why I'm asking, asking you to consider that. Have any questions? Yeah, I guess.
Any questions, ring of caution, comments? If not, we entertain a motion to address this item, 5A. A motion to approve or disapprove? Motion to... Okay, there's a motion on the table?
Second.
All in favor, by raise a hand, please, by show of hands. Motion carries. Six to one?
I have seen that.
You're part of it. Okay. Motion carries. Thank you.
There you go.
Item 5B, "Discussion Regarding Request Made by Ms. Annie Garcia for Possible Amendment to Ordinance Number 2018-08-01." This is an action item, so therefore we need to entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss.
All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you for your time. I have a request and amendment to ordinance number 2018-08-01, that would allow residents the ability to drive their commercial trucks through city streets in order to get to their homes. We're also here to ask that you would have the ability to park our commercial vehicles on our personal property. Most of the local truck drivers do not haul locally, we're just trying to get from home to work and back home. Our trucks leave our home and return home at an empty weight, which is about 29,000 pounds. That's approximately the same weight as a trash truck and a school bus that comes up and down our streets all the time. The trucks that are really damaging our streets are loaded trucks that weigh over 80,000 pounds. There's a big difference between us leaving our homes empty and driving the streets empty. I know the suggestion was to park the trucks at the travel stop on IH35. There's a huge risk of death when you leave your truck unattended on IH35. We pay about $1,000 a week in diesel, and so we couldn't afford to take those kind of chances on a daily basis. We pay taxes on our home in addition to property taxes on our commercial vehicles. I would just hate the thought of having to leave the city, or leave the city limits, or go to another town, just so that we could have the permission to parking our truck, where we can protect it on our own property. I don't really go with your intention to hurt law-abiding, hardworking families of the community, I just ask that you consider an amendment to the previous fee of ordinance that wouldn't affect our livelihood.
Thank you very much. Any else, someone else would like to speak at this time? Feel free to do so. Or is Annie going to be the voice for everyone?
Madam Mayor, can I say something real quick, please? So there's like, I think there's 10 people that signed up.
Okay.
Rather than going through each one and motion to discuss, maybe the thing to do would just be open up for all 10 of those people to speak at once, because it's going to save you guys a bunch of effort up there, and I think it'd keep the discussion a little bit more flowing.
Madam Mayor, I make the motion, if we allow all these people to sign up to speak consecutively, now, do that.
There's a motion, there's a second. All in favor? Yes, sir, your name?
Santiago Rodriguez. I feel the same way, just to give us the opportunity to park our trucks at our homes. They're empty, we go eat empty, we don't return back till seven, eat at afternoon, empty. A trash can does weigh up to 33,000, empty, I did my research on that. Loaded, once it's fully loaded with the garbage and everything, it weighs up to 55,000 to 60,000 pounds. So, we're not really hurting the streets, empty. Loaded, it is. We do pay taxes, we pay property tax, vehicle tax, and business tax. It would hurt us to leave the trucks over at the truck stop, due to the fact that they're a bit deaf, I mean, they will still be diesel, the petrol is giving diesel, tires are missing, you name it, chains, booms, everything. Another thing is, we don't use the streets to cruise around, or be running around the streets, we're just going from home to work, work to home, that's all we're using it for. We're just, for y'all to allow us to park our trucks at our homes, we feel much safer, we can work on our trucks much easier when we're at home. We don't have to leave and, you know, just go to the candy somewhere else, but they're probably going to kick us out, because who knows, all under petrol, they don't allow us to stay there until they charge us. Who knows until when they're going to steal parts off of our truck. We pay thousands of dollars, hundreds of dollars to our trucks, they do mean a lot of value to us. And, I mean, I just, I would just ask people the opportunity for y'all to allow us to park our trucks in our home, and to reconsider that.
Madam Mayor, I want you... Sir, what, your truck and your trailer, is that the combined weight?
Yes. My combined weight on the truck and trailer, I have a 2,060 PS trailer, lightweight. It weighs, it weighs around 20, 21,000 pounds. Truck, truck and trailer together weigh about 32,000 pounds. A trash can weighs more than me, empty.
Yeah, your trash can.
Huh?
Trash truck.
Big trash can.
A trash truck weighs more, more than me. And they are the ones coming from town picking up the trash, you know, they have to, that's their job, I understand, but pretty much, we are not going to stand up the roads, because we're just from home to work, and we don't come back till seven, I think sometimes eight at night, back home.
Now, is that the 32,000 pounds, that's kind of the upper end of, are you a flatbed, or are you a...
No, I'm a bedded truck. C2,060 PS bedded, lightweight.
Are those the more heavier end of the trucks and trailers?
That's what I'm hearing, that's probably... That's the same, it's just gonna get, once I'm loaded, I'm gonna gross out to a max of 84,000. No pit anywhere is gonna let you leave with an overweight permit. That's another one we pay for, an overweight permit to run the Texas, uh, textile roads. You get caught over 84, 80,000, the only limit you can run on IH35 is 80,000, that's it. On textile road, the limit is 84,000 pounds. If you do not have an overweight permit, which costs $350 for the overweight permit, you will get fined as much as you over, because the roads are already maxed out to 59,000, I'm assuming, 59,000, and if from 59,000, you're over 84, you're 84,000, they're gonna charge you 34,000. They're gonna charge you, that's a $10,000, $50,000 other fine. So that's why we pay for the overweight permit, so we can actually call that load out to where the location is needed. And we pay taxes on the plates, too, to get the truck and trailer placed. Basically, it's, it's a lot of money into the truck, but we are not tearing up the roads how they say that, you know, coming loaded, we're not loaded. 100% we're never loaded, with something we own.
Just for a clarification, a lot of the roads, parking market roads are weight restricted to 84, 58,400, so the truckers need to buy an overweight permit that allows them to carry 84,000 pounds. The reason they carry the 84,000 pounds, because they cannot move the load from one axle to the other, to start, you can't, you know, so that's the reason they pay an additional $353 for a permit, an overweight permit. And it depends how many counties you are on there, I mean, it could go up to a thousand dollars, the permit, you know. A lot of the roads around here are weight restricted, so that's why all these guys pay that extra fee, because I seen some of those tickets, it was $2,000 ticket, you know, $5,000 ticket, that's not unusual, you know, so I do commend y'all, I mean, regarding your liability, and I know it's very expensive.
Okay, Mr. Jose Corrales, I think you're next.
Well, basically, they already said everything that I needed to say, as far as the streets being tore up, I don't know, I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure almost everybody who's with me, the streets were already tore up before, they've been tore up for years, you know, so, but then, when I saw the paper, they, they didn't say, they didn't have a truck drivers, and I don't agree with that, so, but, basically, they all said what I needed to say, you know, stating that, well, we wanted to be able to park the trucks in our own house. Some of these, some of the guys come empty, there's been times that I've come home loaded, at this point in time, I don't have to bring a truck home, I leave it at my, at the yard, but later on, who knows, you know, I might be, I might have to come home, I might have to be loaded, but what I want to say is, as long as I stay under the 80,000, which is the legal weight limit, that's, that's what I, that's what I'll just say, you know. Some guys say, well, we go home, loaded, you know, sometimes I'm going to be loaded, but like, some of these trash trucks, they're gonna, they're like 6,000 pounds, you know what I'm saying, so it's still, I just want, they don't want to take that into consideration as well.
Thank you, sir. Raymond Adam.
Well, I'm with everybody else, okay, so, I'm ready to say that anyone to be able to go home, semi, but I'll take my trailer home, I'll park it somewhere else, and I just want to be able to go home without me having to worry about, oh, am I gonna get a ticket, or am I gonna get a citation, or am I gonna go get a doctor's certificate in the morning, you want to take home at 1:30 from work? I mean, I just want permission, like everybody else, just to be able to take a semi home and park it on the property, not on the road, from, hold the ball back, and basically, that's what I'm with everybody else, the same thing.
Thank you. Henry Martinez.
Same thing, it's just, I don't need that structure, I don't need all the damage around here. And then this street, if they didn't, if they just paid, that's the deadline, that's the speed down the sub, let's see if we can get a part of it.
Tomás Salazar. Thomas Salazar.
Everybody said what I need to say, so, I mean, just no use of me saying again. Same here, too.
Gérber Salazar.
Same thing. That Comal Street's been the same thing for 35-plus years, and that's where the schools and churches are, so they didn't fix that one either, you know what I mean? So it's been torn down for more than 35 years.
Let's not play dumb. I got a street over there, Roosevelt and Chaparral, that is still, what, they've been patched about three, four times, and they just go and throw caliche over it, over there, they ask, what, what good is it gonna do? Somebody's got a, I can send them a picture of what they, I mean, it looks like a lake, I think I'm gonna have to buy a boat to go through the...
With a boat?
Pass it down.
Also, the damage is done when the city workers, when they go out there, they put it up, service, and they don't fix it. If they fix it, the road, I can put it back in front, and then a 30, 10,000 feet there, it's been 36, that street? Yeah, they put it down.
No, they're buying, they're fixing, they're fixing it.
Thank you, Mr. Mazanadas. Rodriguez.
Same thing as everybody else, I mean, a lot of the roads also have been broken apart and everything, because they have been gas mined also, I mean, I don't know what street is, by the church, also it's off-labor or not, I mean, we don't know where they're putting gas mine, I mean, another street, they're putting in gas mine, tearing up the roads, trucks, not, trucks, probably not that we, they've been broke apart.
Cesar Cargillo.
The same, I'm with the same both of these guys. Same thing.
Tony Rodriguez. Okay.
I also want to add that my parents, my grandparents, you know, they work for the land that they have, so that their kids can have an opportunity to prosper in this town, not to be held back on anything, you know. As a matter of fact, when the whole boom started, there was a big deal about me making a RV park. They made me go from a regular four-inch tie for a 10, 10-spot RV park to a six-inch tie sewer line, and that price went up from like $2,000 to $4,000 or $6,000 total. Then, they made me go from a three-quarter water line to a two-inch water line, just for 10 RVs, and it also went up $3,000. And I mean, I don't see why I'm not doing a commercial RV park with 30 spots or 40 spots, you know, and just so they can make a little extra money. And that street, 1,060 Speckle's been the same way. You know, I built a house in the back, they were giving me a big deal about sewer, there's no sewer out there. Well, it wasn't my responsibility to put sewer for everybody else, they wanted me to pay for the sewer. And I told them, you know what, I'll put a septic tank in, as soon as y'all put a sewer line out there, I'll take the septic out, you know, and it was just like...
What year was that?
About 2009, 2010, and to this day, I still have one trailer there, and I still gotta pay for a two-inch water main, you know, and that's ridiculous. I still got a six-inch sewer tap that could fuel the Aethel apartments or something for one, one trailer, you know, that's ridiculous, you know, when it could go, and I think the specs are 20 RVs for a four-inch tap, or for a four-inch sewer line, and the same as the water is three-quarters, and I had to get a two-inch water main and a six-inch tap, you know, that raised like $8,000 more than I had to spend, you know. I mean, my grandfather, I mean, he worked 85 years old, 90 years old, till he passed away. My dad's a heartbreak man, and then for us to try to prosper in this town, and then say, oh, you can't, you have to park at the, at the truck stop, you know, who's gonna want to do that, you know, your wife's gonna go pick me up every day, 2:00 in the morning, hang up, I'm gonna pick me up? I mean, they don't make no sense, you know. I understand that you're trying to conserve streets and stuff like that, but I don't see 35,000 pounds damaging the streets, you know, at all, you know, that's, I mean, that's another thing, though.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the council? Yes, sir.
Do you want to trust and park on private property under my own...
Yes, sir.
Do you have to park some trust on the street?
On the side or part of the property?
Inside or...
I've been parking on my driveway for over 10 years, and I did a, it wasn't a professional snap, but it's never cracked, it's never came apart.
So what, sir, what was the ordinance on parking those trucks in the streets there?
Who's it?
It's against the ordinance, park on the city street or the city right of it.
Or the city right of it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so as long as everybody's parked in your property, they're complying with the city ordinance.
Not, not exactly.
But we need to drive to...
Through the street.
Through the street to get to the...
Helicopter's not a good get, it takes...
I'm not parking. I, I, I reside, where I reside is commercial traffic, attention, it was got here, by the way, and I only live, like, maybe not even five houses away from y'all, from our water tank, here in town. Now, it may be I leave at 1:00, 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 in the morning, over the road drive, I drive on flatbed. Now, when I leave, the majority of the time, the water tank is leaking, it's just dripping that water, the whole 8, 10-inch pipe just throwing it all out. Now, when I get on the main drag going down towards IH35, Uncle Mal, I can see that water just running all through the street. Now, we all know the enemy of asphalt is water, because it has oil. Now, and that water just running, and I call it in, and they send somebody, but who knows when, 1:00, 2:00, 3:00 hours after the phone call, but it's not the first time, I've always called them, always called them, and I see the route of that water is deteriorating, that street all the way, just keep going.
Where is this, sir?
This right here is on Peach Street.
And the next one over, Montella Peach?
And whatever street that is next to it, on Peach Street, as you would go down Comal, we'd take a right on Peach Street, that first street towards your left, that's, that's the route of that water. And if I keep going on that main drag of Comal, I can see that water still moving, and it just follows until somebody comes and sits it all out. Now, we all know that's what deteriorating the streets is, the water, there's too much traffic, there's way too much traffic. Now, we know that these commercial vehicles were here, they've been here, but we're not the cause of all this, there's just too many people, and there was too many people, with the oil moving. Now, we live here, we reside here, we growing our children here, we're going to school, doing the whole nine yards. Now, the ones that were here are not here no more, but we, that are from here, are the ones getting the wrath from all this. That's all I've got to say, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? Anyone else have any more comments? Raise your hand.
Can I ask you, the street right here, I know there's been a lot of damage to the street, and just through observation, a lot of the trucks that come in loaded, that are just driving through, coming from Pleasanton or Tardai, trying to get on IH35, bypass the tech stop road, they've entered here because they have trouble making the turn from Oak to Comal, which how many of us have been off Comal and had to back down to let a truck through?
Yep.
Or seen them go over the curb. They're bypassing the tech stop road to, so that they can avoid the turn, and that's the street that turns, because all those trucks are loaded coming here.
Yeah, they're basically coming from evolving, it's statewide, they're not from here, they come, they're coming loaded back and forth every day. We don't, we just hit, as soon as we hit the tech stop road, we hit IH35, or wherever thing we gotta go to, we're not loaded. They are, they're coming with asphalt, green, rock, anything available, bypassing, they're out of time, both of the ones that are toward this road right here, we're not the ones.
All right, I think I missed Santiago Rodriguez, did you speak?
I really...
Okay.
Going for the last second, keep jumping.
Okay. So everyone has spoken, so we'll move on to item K, no, item L. There's no further discussion. Item L is "Discussion and Possible Action in Considering Amending Ordinance Number 2018-08-01, Creating a No Commercial Truck Route Provision and Related Matter." Action item, entertain a motion to the Scotts, please. May I have a second? All in favor?
Madam Mayor, Council, so to start off, let's, let's kind of summarize, so it's not disagreeing with any of these, because I don't think they're the problem, and I think it's the traffic coming through here that's trying to skip, I don't know, I guess that's what we talked about at the last meeting. How do you differentiate that traffic is a whole different thing, how do you say, okay, you're okay to drive on the street, you can drive a semi, but you're not okay to drive on the street because you have a semi? I've spoken to city engineers before, our streets are designed for a weight of between 10, 13,000. ten, thirteen thousand pounds. Um, so that, I mean, you see what it is. Tech stop roads are designed for a different amount. Um, and I appreciate everything that everybody's saying about what they go through, the permits they buy, whatever, because all that money goes to the state or goes to county that come to us, I mean, to help us park. The registration goes to the county, the tech stop permits go to the state and that's how they fix their roads. Um, that's because they know that that extra weight is gonna cause extra wear and strain to those and so that money goes straight into a road repair fund or whatever fund. Um, so there's nothing, any of that stuff that's being paid as far as registration permits or whatever else that comes to the city to help repair the road with the city. Um, as far as the existing ordinances go, it is against city ordinance to park a semi on the street. It's against ordinance to drive a semi, a car, a motorcycle or anything else over a curb or over a right of way. Uh, because you gotta remember, when you go up over that curb or over the right of way, if we've got gas lines, water lines, sewer lines, whatever in that right of way, it's not meant to carry that kind of weight. Um, it's meant to, you know, sometimes they're not, you know, eighteen inches, twenty-four inches underground and so that extra weight can cause damage to those as well. Uh, so it's not just about, it's not just about parking and, and trouble with traffic or whatever else, it's also about what it does to our curbs and officers are taking pictures all the time of curbs that are torn up in town while they've been drove over by semis or they've been hit or they're pulling, or used to, and when I first got here, that's one of the things that PD did was discuss, a lot of them were pulled, I'm not saying this is anybody here, it's probably Matt, but they were pulled one set of tires above the curb and the other set on the road and pull parallel in front of their properties or whatever. So as those tires were on the curb, they were tearing up the curbs and then they were parking right of way, right on top of our gas line, water line, sewer line, whatever else. So that's been, I mean, it's a whole overarching concern, how do you deal with the problem? This street out here in front, especially if you make the corner and go down here to the stoplight of Montalban, you can see what those loaded trucks do because they make this corner, they're going too fast, that light changes, they hit the brakes and you can see where those trucks are stopping right as you pull up this lane. Um, how do we separate that?
It's a cheap ass one.
You know, how, how do you determine who is coming in empty and just go into their house because that's where they want to keep their vehicle to secure it versus somebody else who's trying to get away, you know, trying to, to, to bypass a tech stop intersection because they're afraid of running into a tech stop officer because they are overloaded, it's gonna cost them ten grand if they get caught. Um, and they do it all the time. They get off these tech stop roads as they come through town because they know those tech stop officers are here in town or our officers are gonna catch them here in town and call a tech stop officer and go away with the truck. How do you differentiate that? There's a couple ways I can think of that we can do it. Um, and one would be a parking pass, a parking permit. If you have a semi and you want to keep it in your house, you get a parking permit. If you have that permit, you can go on a city street and give to your house and park it there as long as you're not driving over the curbs and you're not parking on the right of way, fine. Um, but that way, we've got, we've got to come up with some way to differentiate between the people who are trying to make a living and keep their trucks in their house and the people that are destroying our city streets, working for some oilfield company and don't care about our cities that live here. That, that, that was what, this was, I mean, this was, this was a very strong ordinance because it said no more period and then we'll figure it out, but we gotta get it stopped for now until we get it figured out. Uh, but maybe that's a way to fix, I mean, that's one way to fix it. Um, if they have a driver's license with a local address, I mean, that'd be another way. You can say, okay, if we pull them over and they have a local address on their, on their CDL, then they're okay, as long as they're not loaded, as long as they're not loaded because we're gonna stop to watch those, those loaded trucks turn those intersections and we'll see when we get to the intersection, find there later. I mean, our intersections down are torn up and that's the weight going around those corners. Maybe trash trucks too, maybe school buses too, but it's loaded trucks going around those corners too. So there's a couple other ways that we can try to address this and try to figure out something that's a balance where it's not hurting them, but it's keeping those other, it gives our officers a way to enforce keeping those other trucks off of our streets. Um, but I mean, we, that, that's just a couple of things that we talked about this week that we can do, um, to try to, to try to resolve that.
I like the...
When, when the water pool is on, has a loading signal?
I wasn't here, Madam Mayor, I wasn't here.
We weren't here, dear.
Another thing is, we're not out of towners. I know to the police officer who come in, they know, they know who lives in town, who works, who has semis and everything. I don't see a problem with it. I, I know the police officers know who we are, who has trucks. I mean, they pass by our house every day. Uh, they're patrolling, I understand. Um, to avoid a, a problem like this, we'll be right now staying here. Uh, Santiago Rodriguez Jr. is on Main No Seven West Colorado. Everybody that's here that came to this will sign a paper saying, these are the people who are from town and who are trying to stay, uh, at their, keep their trucks at the house.
Okay, and then that's, our problem is from a legal standpoint, if we have an ordinance, we have to have an exemption to that ordinance because if, if, if an officer pulls you over and says, oh, he lives here and another guy comes through and he doesn't live here and he, and he writes him a ticket, he's gonna wanna know what the difference was. The difference either needs to be that parking permit on your truck, there has to be something that designates a...
But we're not paying for that parking permit. That's all it is about, with money. Why are we gonna cost more money for us to park our own trucks in our own house?
Excuse me, sir. Hello, hello.
I didn't say anything about paying.
We didn't say anything about money.
Parking permits.
Hello?
Gilbert.
Excuse me, Gilbert. We didn't say anything about money, we're just trying to figure out a system.
We've got, we've got to come up with some way in the ordinance that doesn't make a difference so that, so that we don't get, and we potentially possibly against the city ordinance. And that has to be something besides knowing where somebody lives. I mean, I'm...
Just for the record, my, if I did, there's no curves.
I'd like to make a motion, um, I'd like to motion to go ahead and repeal ordinance...
Please.
Uh, ordinance, uh, two thousand and eighteen dash zero eight zero one, until further notice, until we do a study on how are we gonna differentiate, uh, locals from the, from out, out of towners right now, you know? And, um, I'd like to, uh, maybe repeal it at this point, you know, until further, further notice. Second.
All in favor?
Two, three.
We have six, two, one.
We should, we should have a special for both.
Discuss. Okay, I thought we had a discussion.
After discussion for both.
Okay. There's a second? Discussion?
I think we should go ahead and amend it rather than repeal, uh, how I have a permit I did, but I also agree, there shouldn't be any cost. Uh, just a permit that allows the citizen to put a sticker, whatever, on your truck and, and, uh, I feel that if we repeal this, it's gonna get pushed down the road. We have so many things going on right now. I would rather go ahead and amend it to...
Someone to address it again.
To a solution rather than push it down the road.
Okay.
With a vanity deal, with a local address?
Well, it's a requirement of, of obtaining a permit. And we're talking about a permit that whoever put on the windshield in and the police would know that.
Really, that's not gonna stop if you get a stop permit. I mean, if we're, if we're behind you, we're not gonna see the windshield. We're not gonna know you have a personal address on your driver's license.
Right, right, right.
Do we make contact?
Yeah.
The law will lay down everything's rules.
Right.
But that's with proof of a vanity deal within the, the address of a city, within the city delivery.
Exactly.
Awesome.
From the prosecuting point, uh, other cities that have truck route violations or truck route ordinances and there's exceptions, for example, for inner city deliveries, those people most of the times get citations even when they're making the delivery and then they have to either fax in a bill of lading or turn in documentation saying that they were making a delivery and then at that point their case is dismissed. So maybe even if you do end up getting the citation and you didn't get your parking permit yet, that doesn't mean you're gonna have to pay the full fine amount, it just means you have to either comply with whatever requirements we sent forward with you to get a parking permit and then your case gets dismissed at that point. So it's just treated as an exception like anything else.
Yeah, but you still end up going to court even though you still haven't, I mean, you don't have time to go to court when you get a ticket.
Well, just make sure you get your parking permit in time and then you don't have to go through that route.
So you don't have to be going through the process, you know, when you get the ticket, you have to go to court, do this and do that.
There has to be a time period for everyone to adjust to comply to the ordinance. So in the meantime, if you happen to get a citation, it doesn't mean that you're gonna have to end up paying that ticket, it just means you have to do what you need to do so that you can park in your property.
There, there are some trucks here in town that do not report, so you need to, their points out later.
Well, then, that doesn't apply to them.
Identify this ordinance, this order, this ordinance, that will not, this ordinance will not apply to them.
It doesn't apply to them.
I understand that if they get stopped, they need to park, I would suggest that we need to park the old road.
Yes, young lady.
Yes, my name's Rosa Ramirez, I'm his fiancee. I know plenty of them have quad comps in their vehicles. So that's on a time and matter and I've been on the road with him where if they get stopped, that's taking time and they're not gonna replace that. There's times where he gets stuck on the side of a highway where a truck can come hit him because he lost time being stopped by an officer. That takes him some time. I think it's wrong for them to do this because he leaves home for two weeks at a time and his daughter's at home without her dad for him to be able to get those at home. He's wasting that time. He was on the road when his father died. I, I just don't feel like that's right. He's trying to provide for the family, but he can't because now he has to worry about where's he gonna park. His job will fire him if he parks somewhere else without not being in that vehicle. When he's at a truck stop, he has to be there.
We got it, dear. Thank you. Okay.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to, um, go ahead and amend my, my, my motion, uh, to go ahead and not repeal it, but I therefore go ahead and maybe create a study in regards to a permit. Okay, so, let's see. I, I would suggest that you, if you want to amend it, go ahead and amend it to include a permit for people who come through residency inside the city limits. And then if you wanna look additional, we can look additional, but let's solve their problem, uh, solve their problem. Uh, if, if, with what you're, what you're originally getting, it doesn't really solve a problem, this will solve a problem and we'll get a permit put together in the next couple of days, it's a sticker, we'll have it figured out and, but then, because it'll be thirty days before that's effective. Uh, it's just, if they can go ahead and get it. Okay. I'd like to amend my motion to include, uh, for it to entail, uh, a residential permit for, for some of these truckers that, that park their vehicles in their property. And prove that, that have a residence here and park at their... To prove to have a residence, uh, property or someone's...
Okay, there is a motion on the table, may I have a second? All in favor? Motion carries, Nannas is asleep. Congratulations, guys.
Thank you.
So let, let, let me say something. Before all of you guys leave, uh, we'll start on, on the, on a permit, something that goes in your window, uh, we'll try to get that done by the first part of next week. And we'll come up with a form for you guys to come into town, show us your residency, um, show us where you're gonna park and then you'll just come in and come up here to the ladies in the front, we'll fill out the form and we'll give you the permit. We'll have, we'll have the first part of next week. We'll try to actually have signs, so you guys make a form of the ordinance.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to item M, discussion regarding intersection, intersection project.
Madam Mayor, Council, um, so this is on here, the next two items are on here before we get to item O, so we can just have a, just have a little bit of discussion with you guys before we actually get to that one. Uh, each of you has in your packet a memo that was put together, this, we, we talked about this at the last meeting. Um, we've been talking about, um, about using the road funds that we have left during this fiscal year to get as many intersections fixed as we could by the end of the fiscal year. Um, the memo that I gave you is a ranking of those intersections, it's done by our staff and then reviewed by our city engineer in accordance with our twenty sixteen utility and street assessment program. Um, Council, I'd be real, just so you know, that intersection, you may say it was the top one, I'll, I'll listen. Yeah. Um, so there's twenty-nine of them that we have in here. Um, when we get to item number O, uh, we'll talk about, about some more of this because we have to spend the funds that we have for this year prior to September thirtieth, the, the first, the first eight or nine of them we've already started. Um, they're horrible and so we got started on those. The rest of them are there, if you guys wanna change priorities or move them around, um, and item number O, we can do that, but I needed to get started on them before this meeting to make sure we got them done before September thirtieth. Um, so the first eight or nine of us will be done by September thirtieth, um, out of the existing budget that we have for this year. And then we'll talk in item O about whether you guys wanna do some more of, um, out of the lot project and keep that project going, um, because this is probably the quickest way to make our streets a lot better, a lot more manageable, probably because the intersections are more, of course, are...
Which is gonna be this?
Uh, the, what's the name of the, the, so we have fifty thousand dollars in the budget, so we did a, we did a contract for forty-nine thousand five hundred, um, because that's what we have to spend basically and that doesn't, that doesn't require a bid and we, we actually got a few bids, but we got a company called, what's the name of the company?
Mary Eddie.
They have Mary Eddie, they come in and do it. Yeah, they're, they're the ones that start on it. Then if we expand the project, then we'll look into it in something different when we expand the project.
And there, there's the name of the name?
Yeah. And that, this is what they do, I think, they, they, and they're actually, they actually cut them. Um, one of the things that we're looking at this, you know, if you look at the way we did the intersections, um, the, the papers that were done on the intersections in the streets, it was a certain distance back of each stretch and so it looks like a T. Uh, a lot of our intersections we have, it's not the whole T of them, it's that, it's one side of it or it's a portion of it. So these are actually cut, almost, they're, they're almost like J solvers. So we're not, we're taking out just what, what needs to be repaired, saving money on materials so we can expand that, that money that we did have, um, in the, in the general fund, what did it get as much done as we could with what we did, uh, with what we had. Um, so it's, it's a little bit different the way we set this up to get it started. Some of you'll see like a one side have puddle, the other side didn't come in the intersection, so we're gonna cut the side out that, that had the puddle, but we won't cut the other side out, but it's still good and not waste any of that extra material. Um, and this, they, when they were coming, they would come and make those cuts, do the J solvers, so it's, it's gonna stretch out a little bit, we have a general fund and we'll want to...
So this is really gonna be a patch, they're gonna cut it out, they're gonna rework the, rework the base?
Or rework that base or rework the base.
He's actually bringing in a rater, uh, he's gonna start rating, especially some of the ones that are pretty bad. That's where it's something he, uh, yes, and he wants to bring in, uh, this rater, you know, some of them are pretty bad and they're, they're cleaning up the edges. So he's gonna come in and, uh, the ones that are really pretty bad, we talked about it, was, uh, removing several inches and bringing a new base compacted and then he come in with two inches of, of asphalt particles.
But it, this won't be a C, it won't be more than that.
You're gonna build it? Are, are they gonna build that, that rater or are they gonna use a rater or?
They're gonna, they're gonna create it out, whatever, uh, asphalt they have and they come back and put a new, new base.
So we'll soft cut the existing pavement, it'll, it'll go, it's gonna be reused.
Yeah, two inches of ground.
Yeah, and then, then we'll put down a new base and we'll put random, random, uh...
So it's gonna be, uh, connect the puddle.
Yeah, we're gonna...
The old street's gonna be...
Yeah.
I'll be asking.
It'll be random, random, general intersection, so lots of... So that's all that, that's what we give to item O unless there's any more questions.
This is general fund, right?
Yes, that's the, the way that we have it after H E.
Okay, moving on to discussion regarding updates on Moreno Street.
Mr. Mayor, Council, uh, we've had the discussion several times regarding Moreno Street. Uh, I think, been several months, maybe five, six months ago, uh, when we performed a photographic survey of Moreno Street. Uh, at that time, what we determined was that what happens is that in that area, it's really not on Moreno Street, it's on Garcia Street. All that water from the northwest, Colorado, which is all flows down through Garcia Street. And once that hits its capacity, what happens is it overflows the curb and it flows onto Moreno Street. And then from there, it just flows down a bit.
Yeah, I don't know.
Go ahead.
Can, can we put up a city map? I think it would help everybody if you kinda showed.
Is it on that one, the picture that we did this on?
Do you have a big one?
You probably should Google or, like, either one of my peers.
You can continue on while he's talking. I mean, you can continue on talking while he's trying to find his Google Earth. It may take a while.
So, so one of the topics of discussion that we have is that if we can't solve the issue on Garcia and, and Moreno, those areas. And first of all, originally, if you start working from down, you're changing it up. In other words, you work at the outfall. Start working that way and then start addressing the upstream issues. Because if you don't fix the outfall, wherever all the water goes through, then you're pretty not gonna have an impact in upstream. Uh, so one of the items that, that we discussed with city and city staff was looking at the ditch on fifteen eighty-one. If you're down fifteen eighty-one, uh, that ditch is filled with silt, all different types of material and everything. So one of the items that we're looking at that you wanna bring up on, on agenda item O, is putting a concrete base from Guinean all the way back to one forty. So we have a concrete base, the water should flow out of there. It's gonna probably add a little bit of ditch with capacity, but also give the city the ability to maintain that ditch. And with that, it's also gonna give you a little bit of, the, the one problem there is the downstream of that, the county is maintained by the county. So after the city goes through and, and concrete lines that section with ditch, uh, it's gonna be mandatory for, for, uh, for the city to hook up the county and have them clean out their portion of it. And what that will do is that help all the water, not just in that area on the northwest side of town, but the whole northeast side of town also drains, like McDonald's and that, there's big box covers that all drain into that one ditch. So it's not only gonna help that side of town, it's helping northeast side of town, so it's gonna help pretty much three quarters of the city. So that's, and I'll go over that in a little bit. As far, as far as Moreno Street, if you think of the drive out there, it's only water that can get to Moreno Street. If they cross Garcia Street through the yards and off to Moreno. And it comes down, the water coming down one, one forty of Pomona Street, comes down the curb and it turns into, you know, I can show you. So, all this water up here comes down Colorado Street, neither turns down Provenio, doesn't turn down Provenio, comes this way and goes down Colorado, because there's a high point right here. Goes down Garcia, and right here at Garcia and Comal over one forty, there's only three little inlets, and all of that is controlled, controlled by Textop. And that's all they allow the city in order to, that, those building three.
There you go. Switch to, switch to the other side.
Yeah.
You move to the other side. Yeah, there you go.
Right here. So all this water pretty much just comes to Garcia Street, gets to Garcia Street, and once Garcia, once Garcia Street meets the passing, it flows back to Moreno. Or it comes off the highway, and some of this goes down Provenio, comes this way, or you can see some coming down, and it turns off to Moreno Street. And then you have a little close water stream. So there's really, there's really not much you can do on Moreno Street that would solve that issue. That's what I'm meaning to, is...
Isn't there a drain of covers at Christie and Liza Street? And what I've, what I've observed, and aren't the, the water is not being here to that drain.
Through this drain here?
Yeah, it's not making that drain. It's, it's not very, where do we make the drain? That's, that's, it's an issue.
So, okay, one more.
There's, there's a drain there along Garcia Street, not just down from Malo and Garcia, but somewhere along Garcia Street, there's a drain and the water doesn't get there.
So, that, that line right there with those two inlets, that's an eighteen inch line, that's pretty, it has no grade on it. The over, those inlets were so that the water would drain over time into those inlets and get out of there over time. I mean, because there is really no capacity, it's an eighteen inch line, there's really no capacity of that explosion. The issue is actually Garcia Street filling up with water, there's just a whole bunch of runoff to get to that point. And once it crosses that top of curb, once it hits that capacity in that street, it, it pretty much flows over. Because this is an empty lot right in here, and there's a high point right here. Not as that water comes, and you, of course, you have water that falls on this empty lot and comes this way, but there is no water that gets to Moreno, the side where it overflows Garcia Street, where it comes down one forty, and gets to Moreno.
What would happen if you would lift?
The curb?
No, the, the whole stream.
Then it's gonna be able to get here. That, this is the only, right here is the intersection, and it's controlled by Textop. Are the only three.
So, but if you would lift Moreno Street a little bit?
So all these inlets here come, come, if you lift Moreno Street?
Yeah.
Then you're gonna be holding water in the, in the, in the, so.
Yes, Robert.
Now, you can probably put, because the water holds right there, you can see it, right? At this Kennedy and Moreno, all that water, it, it holds there. I mean, it does.
Um, what I noticed, the culvert really is, is, is that apartment complex that's there. And, and that's exactly, that's what started all this, because before the complex was built, there was no problem. You know, uh, I feel the culvert is, is that apartment complex that's there. So is there any way we can address that issue, uh, with the complex or, or what have you? I mean, I, because they, they have a holding pond there, I don't know what to say.
Because Councilman Briscoe and I just go over the fact that pump was running when we were there.
Exactly.
And the, the pond is, it's full of silt. So it, it might help the situation in smaller events, but when you get a lot of rain, it, there's really, it, it might even create a, a bigger problem. Because if, there's a huge, like, two hundred and fifty horsepower pump inside that basin. So if you, if you stop all of the rainwater, right, for, for a moment, it fills up that pond, and then the pump kicks on, you're pretty much gonna consolidate, you know, thousands of gallons of water into one. That pump kicks on, it's just gonna force it down Christie Street. You're gonna have the same situation. Really, the only, the only, which I don't think any of those residents, residents on Garcia Street on this side, it would be to raise that curb somehow or another, and then they're gonna have a difficult time getting into their, their drives, because from Garcia Street here, it just drops off.
Madam Mayor, I, uh, Robert did take me down a little bit, and I know some of you guys have seen it, and I, I recall seeing the water come down west of the mountain and rivers. And I know each one of those side street gets a share of that kickoff, so they become this way. But looking at it, um, with, with Robert's eye, kind of pointed out, really looks like Garcia is one of the worst street in Marino, except for that little pocket right there in Kennedy. And Reno, you can see the roads.
Yeah, right.
But what it, it looked like happened, a few of the residents on the east side of Garcia have built up their driveway. In other words, there's a curb cut, and then kind of filled it up a little bit, and they look like they're okay, but then there's others that are just flat. And it looked, and it slopes from Garcia and sloping east straight to Marino. So there's, right there, what's that street with a C above Garcia?
Christie.
Christie. Right in there, those three or four houses, it looks like it overflows and then runs through their yards into the Marino Street's yards into Marino.
That's where, those, those right there are about three feet higher than, than the, the other houses, and initially that runs down. Once it meets capacity, that water shoots down and goes off.
And you can see those driveways where the, where actually the water runs.
Really, a big issue? And, and we've dealt with Textop, I mean, past twenty years, just, you're at that capacity on their one forty storm sewer. And what they do is they look at a narrow, they take a narrow view of what they're responsible for, and it's like a hundred feet on each side of the wall. So a hundred feet is a spirit like that. And you have thousands of neighbors that drain down this way and get to this point right here.
So, when was that? When was that?
Eighteen inch pipe? Uh, that did, drain these area right here? That would go in twelve feet, twelve, twelve, right?
And all the time the apartments there?
Oh, before that.
So, did I get a problem with the apartments? When we put that eighteen inch pipe there?
Yeah, they're all, since the apartments were built, there's always been an issue with the apartments and the amount of runoff.
The apartments came first, and then, and then we came in with eighteen inch pipe in the city, right?
You can't put anything, Textop does not allow you to put anything bigger in the system. In other words, you can put, there's, all they allow you to do is tie into that, that inlet right there, and it's a small inlet.
We have to tie into eighteen inch inlet.
Yeah, you know, it's smaller than that. It's just a box. It's maybe, there's three openings, it's two feet by like three feet. It's just a box, it, where the water goes in, curbed in it. So all they did was allow us to tie into that inlet with an eighteen inch pipe, no grade, to try to drain that area as best it could. But when a big event comes, it's gonna overflow the street. But the whole purpose of those inlets is that after that big rain event, and the earth starts setting, drains that area faster than it was, and goes in this water.
Okay, where's that metal go?
Oh, it comes down and it goes into the fifteen eighty-one ditch. They're, they're pretty much all the north, from Malo that way, all the northeast, all the northwest, cross business thirty-five, from McDonald's there, you can cross to the high, all that comes through and hits that one point right there. All the way into Park Time Road, all the nature, all the, all the, just things. And you see that fifteen eighty-one ditch?
Yes, Sonia.
What can, what can be done there on Christie where the drains where Julian says they're at? So the water can go in there to eliminate all this flooding. Because I, I have a relative who lives there on Christie Street, and his back door, he had to put like this much cement, because the water was going into his house. And he doesn't have a back.
And that's why, both drains are there, they're not to remove the water like when they break it, because they're not gonna keep up, there's no way, because you're living in by Textop. All they're there for is that when it starts draining, the water drains out eventually. But there's nothing that you can do in that area because of Textop. In other words, Textop's pipe right here is a certain size, right? And it can only carry so much capacity.
And you can't, it can't be done further up on Garcia?
Still the same pipe.
It's still the same pipe. This, this right here, this right here is your living factory, which is, which is Textop. In other words, if they have a ten inch pipe here, I can't go with a twenty inch pipe on Garcia, because I only have a ten inch pipe. So you can't put a twenty inch pipe in a ten and expect it to flow more water. So right here, I have a ten inch pipe, and I have, I have a ten inch pipe here, and with all this runoff, I probably need a fifteen inch pipe. Because of Textop, Textop limits, they look at a hundred feet on each side of the highway, and they designed their storm sewer for that hundred feet. And all the thousands of acres to the northwest, it's a city you do it.
Yes, Julian.
Now, now, whatever right here, if you wanna work on that intersection, there might be something you can work on that intersection, just, because you're just gonna move the problem down a bit, and in other words, I'll just sit down where we need to go to the inlets here. You can try to redo that curb and gutter, so that it flows down a bit and a little bit quicker. But even right there, it's a little flat, see, if you, uh, replace the curb and gutter, it's not gonna get there. Quick, right over there, and in overtime, with the shifting soil and stuff, you know, you get.
Isn't there a pump there in that area?
There's, there's a pump up here for, for the, for the.
Well, yeah. Well, yeah. No, 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 I'm talking about, uh, Vinton Street, uh, Vinton and East Side Street, uh, Kennedy. There, there's a, uh, in the alley, I think there is, somebody's property, I think there's a, there's a pump there.
There's something, that's from the markets. No, he said, he said, Bailey, Bailey.
He said the corner of Kenny and then?
Yeah.
Bailey from what?
Is that a Textop pump?
No.
It's a city.
Sorry? And it's a storm pump?
It's a small pump.
What is it? Is it on the storm line or is it almost off?
On, right. What those residents, that, that, that?
What is it pumping to?
That's what I'm saying, where's the problem there is, is that there's a hole that's been built there.
One pump of water out on Black Street.
Mud zone, and then there was a gentleman that built a car lot, and built up the car lot, and then the water now goes to, to that resin. So that was the reason they put a pump there.
The city put a pump there or?
I don't know.
The resident?
He says it, yeah, Bruce says it's ours, that was straight out of the Vinton Street.
Pump down there.
Exactly.
Well, if I pumps into this, there's this gas right here, and Comal's in, and by the sound of it, but from just south of Moreno right here, all this area, that's a hundred years of that.
How do you pull that clean?
It's a hundred years, I think, which in theory, it's supposed to flood every hundred years, but you know that's not.
Yes, Dave. Yes.
Well, I have one question. Was there enough questions? You were saying that all that water flooded too, too strong behind Textop put in, wanted to run it out from Malo to get, to get, they had one coming out the ditch. Pudding bypass Textop, and then I go through the ditch on the north side of.
You, you can, you can try to do that?
No, wait, you're, you're.
I mean, you're talking, you're probably said huge box covers, and then you would have to try to get through here somehow or another. And that's why I was looking for against the vacuuming, but there's no, no way that you can get through.
Well, written I say that, what you're talking about then is, what you're talking about then is, everything you do is just wanna move it further this way. Further this way, you're getting closer to that fifteen eighty-one ditch. So if you intentionally, instead of these people there, just intentionally do something.
But the issue you have, this whole area right here, that near the hundred year subcan right there?
Yes, sir.
I was gonna say, I've been here all my life. There used to be a stop around where Provenio Store used to be, that flooded all the time. We had to go in there and boats and get people out of their houses. There is now a huge drainage line that starts up north, goes down and goes into the ditch down there. My question is, why can't you better wait over on Moreno, what, what is the street that comes down from Moreno down to Gorgo?
Kennedy?
We're watching the glass.
Glass.
Right in there, why can't you come down where your, your huge puddle is, where it's flooding up and causing the fur? Why can't you put in a drains, that one over there, they're about five foot, about, about four foot, the ones that are in the ground over there now.
The ones from Textop?
Huh?
From Textop?
No, the city put them in. We passed an arc, we passed a bond issue about forty years ago and did that.
On, on Garcia Street?
Yeah.
Garcia Street doesn't have big pumps. They're not, they're not, they're not big.
The ones I'm talking about are not on Garcia, they're, they're, come by the Catholic Church.
You're talking about the one that come from McDonald's? That was back in seventy, right?
Yes.
They put a huge, huge.
Huge, yeah.
Those are the ones that plenty of the grain all of the northeast side.
Where I'm asking there, why can't, and I know it would be a bond issue to have to do it, but why can't the city do that and not worry about Textop? Because you're not gonna get anything out of Textop.
You're exactly right. That's, that's what you would have to do. You would have to put in huge box covers and try to capture it.
I'm gonna capture it up there?
Uh, Garcia and Vinton.
Go on, we're in there. Bring it into that, there is a creek that runs back in there.
Actually, that, and it's just, that's all I need to be able to, ties into that pond, like.
But that, that's the only way you're gonna, that's the only way you're gonna solve your problem there, because you're not gonna get any help from Textop.
I, I, I agree. And that, Textop really is limiting traffic, and they're the ones that are causing the problem. And we've tried, and we've tried to deal with them over the years, and they're just, they're, they're narrow minded, and they just look at the hundred feet on each side of
A hundred percent.
Of the highway, and that's it. I, I can look at the cost of doing that, I'm telling you, it's probably gonna be.
It's gonna be several million.
Many, several million dollars.
Wow.
And, and the issue, you're gonna have to, have to cross, you're gonna have to cross one forty with those big box covers.
No.
Yeah, because the ditches, the ditches, you're limited, that crossing one forty right there?
Yeah, you can open it up somewhat. It's about four foot deep.
We're talking about the one crossing one forty?
Right there at my brother.
Because the box covers you're talking about, they come from McDonald's? They actually come out on San Antonio Street. So they cross one forty, and they come out on San Antonio Street, and they're, they're huge.
I'm sorry, but it's, it's two boxes together, or two huge, two huge boxes.
So we would have to put, it's still part of the cost, we were probably talking, I can run some numbers. The only, the only thing I can buy a car is, well, you've got a CS, we, we have to catch some of the, a lot of the tears and then a big box cover trying to run in the middle of the street, trying to get across the, I mean, it's box, I can look at rocks and put a number together. If you want me to do that.
What, what I've seen is the water is actually not getting to the box, and it's jumping the curb on Garcia.
We, we get, in fact, we're looking, we're gonna, they go get to the box, but just, and one of the other options is adding more boxes up here, and actually put it in a further description.
On Christie.
But once that's full, it should have a small pipe.
Some of the later gates?
It's, it's a small eighteen inch pipe and no grade.
But the Textop line's smaller.
No, Textop doesn't, it just doesn't have enough capacity.
To pick them all up.
So they limit you, they choke you down, you know, you do. In other words, there's not. In other words, their line is huge, their line is huge, but right here, like Garcia? And Vinton, they only let you put in small inlet, it's tight. So they have a big pipe, but they limit what you can, the size of pipe that you can tie in.
So that's what's causing the water to jump because you don't have...
No.
No?
There's not enough inlet, there's not enough, your, your storm sewer's not being able to open it. It's choking, yeah.
I've seen the water jumping curb and there's inlet waiting for water and it's not getting the water on Garcia.
Yeah, I see that too.
And that's...
So what's causing the water to jump the curb?
Because the water's getting, it's, it's, it's rising at that point.
Heavy downpour?
That's where the inlet should have been, well, at least.
It should be moved a little further north.
And what about if we're putting up inlet, so we'll put them higher. Because when there's all that water, it's gonna come down. It's, so if the order for it to jump the curb, curb in that area should be forty-six inches. The driveways are maybe two inches. That means that whole street is full of water, two inches or more. In order for it to go for the two inch curb, that means that whole street has to be two inches in line. So once you get to that point, I mean, that's...
Fifteen inch pipe isn't very good then?
Fifteen inch pipe is not very good to move. Now, Grant, I agree with you. That, that whole area right there, the grass has to be killed and has to be reshaped in those inlet. You can add additional inlet, which would help the water get out once, once it's gone. Once it goes over the curb, there's nothing you can do. But when it stays in the curb and it'll get in the inlet and then it'll slowly flow out. But that's gonna be over like, say, twenty-four hour period. If it gets over the curb, then that means you've already exceeded the capacity. So you're pretty much with, with the street hole. Because your, your street is, is really...
Yes, that's how it should work. But the water has jumped in the curb, or it's, the inlet is useless. I've seen that.
I think what's happening, what you're talking about, because if it, because there's a crown in the road. There's a crown in the road. So there's a, there's a crown on Garcia. So to get over, it would have to go over that crown and, and, and onto the other side of Garcia. I think what happens is it's covered down Colorado, crosses to the south side of Garcia. And then it just fills up that side and then overflows.
Maybe more inlet to my...
And so part of the... But what I say more inlet will help, it's gonna help the smaller rains. And if the water's gonna hit in there, it'll faster go in. The rains, and you get four, five, six inches, it, it, that whole street is just gonna flood. It's gonna go over the curb and it's gonna go to water.
It makes a lot, we have several areas now that get water. But to alleviate someone...
We got a, well, we have another idea that might help alleviate some of you that...
Get towards alleviate, but then...
Move it faster.
Move it faster.
Move it faster. Maybe, maybe move it faster than adding inlet. So we can talk about that when we get there.
But, yeah, so that, anything else on Moreno or...
I think, Julian, the, the porch that you're talking about, to me, to me, just looking at it, those would probably be the ones on the west side of Garcia that you probably see. Because it, it looks like it does, it comes rushing down off that hill, hits the east side of the street and there backs up. And it does, it looks like those ports are not as, as probably better, as well placed. But then, but then again, you can put more ports, but it's already at capacity. Well, you know, the line's only gonna hold so much water.
You can add them up here on these streets, Liza, Christie, Eddie, put them a little bit further. But that's all that water's gonna cast all in that street. Once it keeps just flowing, it's just, it's like, it's just sheet flows through there.
But that one port would just be located...
You're talking about the one on the east side of Garcia that...
It's like, it's these two, it's like Eddie, the one here, the one here.
Christie.
There's two, there's four. There's two on Christie and there's two on Eddie. And then you have, and then you have an inlet on Garcia Street right here, and then inlet on Garcia Street on the east side, which should pick up anything that crosses. And that's what I was talking to you. Anything that crosses and gets to this east side of Garcia, there's two inlet right here. Between Eddie and Christie and Liza and Liza and Christie. And that should pick up anything that crosses, gets to that side. But once those are at capacity, it's just gonna, it's gonna overflow curb. And you could pick up the curb, I mean, if people are waiting, you could, you could build up the curb if you're gonna have a big deal. And I don't, I don't know if you're willing to do that or want that.
So any...
Well, what we talked about, if we, if we do raise the curb, we're just pushing the problem down. Another street is supposed to have, I don't know, yourself pushing off another neighborhood, probably Vinton.
Let's talk about Christie.
There was a...
And then Vinton, Vinton works itself? With the inlet and everything?
It needs to back to the ground.
Yeah, over high water.
But from, but from that way, it turns off onto Garcia Street, down there where the intersection is, right? It flows off Carmel backup that way.
Yeah, but then it gets, it gets to these inlet right here, the three inlet. You're on the east side of...
And once those three outlets get full, it was above the...
And to make it full, fast, you put concrete in that intersection there.
Well, we're talking about some concrete a little bit.
Okay.
Well, is there an open pump?
Which open pump?
Is there an open pump?
Oh, yeah. Where are we at? What is it? Is that the apartment there? Between, sorry, over here. Thirty-hundred and seventy-seven. Over here.
And how they... How they go pump, how much is this pump?
Two hundred, two hundred and a half. I would say about a two hundred, two fifty, just by looking at it.
Is there quite a stop in the old...
Two hundred fifty. Oh, thousands of gallons. Two hundred...
Right over to, yeah, towards, well, towards Vinton.
You know, any of, you know, any of your water pump, that's bigger than any of your water pump. We can...
That's two hundred and fifty. Pump, pump shouldn't be pumping three or four thousand minutes. I'm in the water weir.
I'm in the water.
It's in there, you should go beyond.
Paul Scherz, you live in the water.
Oh, that big pump.
Yeah, that's like private, private property pump.
It was approved by the city council?
It was approved by the city.
It was approved.
But the water knows what, water pumping through there as well.
Or does it discharge?
Uh, down Christie Street?
It just goes down...
There's concrete, like right in here behind his houses, there's concrete.
Yes.
And at the time, they were supposed to dedicate an easement, which really wouldn't help anything because it's just gonna get the water to Reno quicker. But it just discharges this concrete path right here. Eventually just flows through these houses, gets on the Reno, goes down Christie. And all that water goes down the shit, and then when it hits Garcia Street, it's probably just...
Well, I got, I got, I got...
Thousand gallons per minute.
Those are there was the discharge is in the city street.
Prior council.
Prior.
Two thousand and eight, so within the past, and that, that, that's a good record that it brought all the way down to fifteen eighty-one, brought under the bridge.
Any market? I would imagine, I would go, that's a legal matter, it has probably, but I, is there anything they can do as far as maybe residents complaining that it's causing issues flooding their houses?
It's just a couple of minutes. But I don't know, that's...
You've got two things apart. One is you have a private cause of action of anyone in the water code between popular, between neighbors. Of course, the city is going to presumably have immunity up to a point, up to the point of what's called an inverse condemnation or taken. But it's, you know, it's very fact, because to answer the question, you start off with what happened between popular and eventually they, they, they're going to blame or regulate or pay the city for allowing the situation for duration. And then it's a question of whose at fault as it relates to the effect on the problem, et cetera.
Well, I...
Mayor, what are your questions? One, one of the things you guys have all seen retention ponds that, you know, all over San Antonio and so on and so forth, well, this is probably, you know, a quarter of an acre. And, and I don't know the depth of it, but it's completely silting in. I mean, there's tree, willow trees. And so if nothing else, it's not, I'm just speculating, probably, capacity is probably twenty percent of what it should hold.
Okay, so and I would not, the pump shouldn't either. It should, you should be on the pump, there should be an overflow. And just the way textile limits the amount of water that can come out of that, of course, that we can put into their system, we should limit the amount of runoff that they can put on the city. In other words, their pre and post development should be the same level. So they shouldn't get, they shouldn't, they shouldn't increase the amount of runoff onto the city street that was there, that was more than what was there initially, post and pre and post development. I think that should be an argument that we're willing to do. I don't know if they necessarily have to do it, it's interesting.
If you guys could see, Johnny, if you see the condition of the pump, it's amazing that it's running.
Well, I read on the left in the question, you say you have an easement from the retention pond out in the Wood Street.
There was, if you look at old fans, but it was never dead. There's an easement that's supposed to go from department complex to Reno Street through this opening right here. I can't remember the name of the factory, but they were the ones that were in there.
In fact, he, he was actually wanting to, to see the city for, for, for not to put him in that easement that he not dedicated.
But, but I'm only waiting to see that with the city representative to go talk to the complex and see if they're willing to address the issue. Because I don't think, I know for sure the pump is becoming a situation. Of course, all that water is going to get down to somewhere. But if they can clean up that ditch, maybe deepen it, and we can slow the amount of runoff that's coming off that complex, it will help the situation some. And we solve both, well, you know, the...
What's the normal engineering standard on, on retention ponds? They're supposed to hold...
Pre and post development for twenty-five a year, depending on what the city's boards are standing, twenty-five or like in a hundred. A minimum twenty-five. So in other words...
So it should be holding the three inch, right?
Oh, close to it, yeah, someone made it three foot here. And what you do is you limit, you say, okay, your overflow has to be a certain level. Or your pipe coming out can be a certain size, and then that limits the amount of... So to help the situation, I can limit, because I need a Colorado street that also flows along with you because of Garcia. And if you're doing...
There's Colorado, picks up the two streets over there, behind the...
And you pick up all the land going backwards, the line of street.
Picks up those two streets.
And the land going backwards, that way. That was the biggest.
Alrighty, any other questions?
So best then is to figure out something to make the department complex do.
To address their retention pond issue.
We can, hey, or, they are at a certain point.
Is it possible to put in another inlet somewhere in the square?
Another inlet? Uh, yes. In fact, I have a, if we go to the next item, I have a cost estimate to add inlet. But we were looking at maybe addressing some other projects, and if there was money left over, then we would go back and add inlet to Garcia Street.
Okay.
Can you...
One second.
It was, by the way, it's two hundred and five.
Two hundred and five?
Yeah.
It's your barter call?
Yeah, the barter call.
So we moving on to item O, discussion and possible action in regards to amendment to the 2016 CO bond project budget. Uh, this is an action item, therefore we need to entertain a motion to discuss, please. May I have a second? All in favor?
Mayor, before we start, um, each of you was given a four-page spreadsheet from back. This is a complete, um, listing of everything that has been done over the 2016 CO bond. All the projects that we've done, where, where it went, what happened under each one of the task orders. So that task order for gas hydrant replacement, waste water treatment plant, sort of, water line costs, all those. Well, I have Robert, Robert with you right now to talk about what we done and what we have left. And then we'll talk to you again about, um, some things that we need to look after before. So Robert.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'll go either, each, each, uh, project has its budget, I'll go to each one. If you look at first page, the gas hydrant replacement project had an estimated budget of seven hundred and sixty thousand. Uh, the first project was approximately two hundred and fifty-two thousand. Recently, we did the second portion in the second phase, and the elevator was came in at four hundred and seventy-five thousand, which was a deficit from the debt nine item at fifty-eight thousand. But if you go back up to the very top, if you look at our CO 2016, the amount that the city received was eight point four million year to date. We spent approximately six point two in Conver, which means the way we have in the contract, is another nine hundred and fifteen thousand. So if we were to go through and complete all the projects, we would still have a balance of one point one two six million. So now going to the gas line project, uh, with the phase two project, a hundred, four hundred and seventy-four thousand, like a center of seven thousand, that would put us over that nine item budget by fifty-eight thousand. Plus, it's our recommendation that instead of changing or reducing that project down by fifty-eight thousand, since we have a property one, one point one million, this is go through with, because there's still other gas line projects that we didn't have to complete in order to meet the railroad commission requirements. And my recommendation was this is go through with the full, the full project and cover the four seventy-five. That would still leave us with that point one one balance. Uh, the next item is the wastewater treatment project. The budget for that line, for that, that project was one point six million. After the replacing the aerators, the drying beds, uh, the air fryers, we still have approximately two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars left over that, that budget nine item.
And, and what's the difference between closed means done?
Closed.
And then, um, you have done complete, what's the difference between closed and complete?
We have the same thing right here.
On there in the back, that means the, those streets have been completed. So it's pretty much the same thing. Closed means everything's been closed out, payments, full payments have been done.
Okay.
It has been completed.
And it'll be inside out on it?
Yes.
We're hoping for it.
So is any of these streets, you ever have any issues with? Any people?
Oh, again, we have one street left of that project, which is the Willow Street project. Uh, when they come to do the Willow Street project, they're correcting the issues with the other one. When they come to pay Willow Street, we can get it dried out, they come to pay Willow Street and finish that project, that's where we're correcting the issues with the other streets. More than getting started on the other streets.
More than getting started, and we haven't paid fully, and we still need to retain it on that dollar. We haven't really released everything.
So it's not on our...
Yes, that, some of those streets have been completed, you know, we paid for some, but we haven't retained the some. So that if they don't come back and fix those areas that we need them to fix. And I brought that up, I bring up a quick point, I'm just bringing it up right now. I know Rick has a running list of areas that we want to address, the council sees any areas that, and Rick, you could, you could get that to the city manager or Rick, that would be a good list of areas that need to be fixed. So then when the contractor does come back, we make sure to depress all these issues.
No, it's not just about areas, it's not the actual work itself. Point to Rick, it was supposed to be eight six inches, and that's what you said.
And I'll be before you go through, I misspoke. I went back and I looked, and our clients, due to the budget, were really two inches and only some, uncertain streets have only the edges. That's when I went back and I found out that we're only over, we're only maybe... That's when I went back and I found out that we're only over, we're only maybe two or four inches of somewhere else.
Four inches of this.
The street, yes.
So, most of these places where there are, uh, cracks on, on the, uh, new pavement, the, the, the surface, uh, those cracks are, there's, there, the old streets right there, you can't, you can't see anything else.
Those are the areas that, that are on, in the middle, they're not, they're not, it's only the edges, is where they are, where they're gonna, and there's something.
Some of them, yeah.
Yeah. No, we know that, we're gonna address those. I mean, even in the middle, we already talked to the contractor, he's gonna come back and he's gonna mill the area that he wasn't supposed to mill, just to make sure.
I, I, I can tell you from, when we drove out there, what I saw is, they're most appropriate to follow with their, the existing pavement, you put a tack down to work so that the, the hot mix will stick to the pavement below. It looks like there was something wrong with maybe their distributor, so that maybe one of the, the spray nozzles was caught, and you didn't get boiled down, so it didn't stick to the existing pavement. So they have to come back and address all those, those areas.
So they're gonna have to spot patch it?
Uh, they're gonna have to come in and spot patch it.
Like, he's not just gonna do spots, he's gonna do.
He's gonna do long strips.
Long strips, yeah. I mean, there's huge strips that he's doing, but he's also going to areas where people are not supposed to mill and, and, and rehere. He's gonna come back to the middle, and he already agreed to, he's gonna, he's gonna take it from himself.
His fault.
Like his fault. So, Robert.
I, I also saw this curving there, hat there, it's shabby work, uh, I don't know if you seen the curve there, right corner, uh, hat there, it looks like, you know.
Where'd you, where'd you do it?
Well, somebody did a curve there, but it, it was pretty shabby, so I don't know if you seen it, I mean.
I, we, we have no curve.
Did they, did they cut a curve for utility? To do a utility line or something, maybe? That's why they don't curve.
Exactly, that's why they did the gas line and hackers, uh, the one we came back after the Bethel money, we came back and we, we rented it and.
If, if it's actually the curving closer to the, uh, the storage tanks, the, the water tank, that area, you should see it, I mean, it looks shabby green.
Nobody, nobody look there, we have a big curve there.
Unless, unless it was a concrete till.
Unless it was a curve or a gas line. But this was an older project, it's not, it was the, the previous contractor that wasn't it.
And then store drain, the store drain that they put concrete, or like, store drain, uh, one of those manholes, I mean, that's, that looks pretty shabby as well.
I can go look at it, I'll, 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 we'll see all that on that.
But as far as curve, we're, I can address it and see if we can do it.
Because since, since we last spoke here about this, I've noticed more, more slippage everywhere, and so, I mean, we, we can address those areas that are affected, but it appears like it's, this is terrible.
We have a one-year warranty, so, I mean, we can always address it. That's it, they have.
Shouldn't we consider, I mean, what are we gonna do, have them just repair it with the patch, if it comes up in the next fifteen years? How long is it going to? These streets for the last fifteen years, that's the, those last fifteen years over the top, having us in fifteen weeks.
I wouldn't necessarily say fifteen years, but, but they, they should, and they shouldn't, I agree, they shouldn't skip like that, but we're gonna have to address those areas, if anything. I would say if it doesn't, if it doesn't pop up in a year, then who's actually to school, I don't know.
I'm, I'm really getting concerned regarding Willow Street as well, I mean, what is gonna happen in that area? Is, is it all gonna be built, or, I mean, what, what's?
Well, it's gonna be one hundred percent built, yes.
Everything.
Everything's.
Yeah, but I mean, we have a problem with both sides, so there's no way that we can not build.
Well, sir, you, you know, another thing, I, I was told that it was possibly gonna be completed on or before.
We have the, and item U here, Willow Street.
Yeah, and Willow Street, that's the reason that we're doing Willow Street, is Willow Street had to be addressed by Old Street had to be addressed. So that's why we were, they wanna come up with that additional money to do the whole street, and not just, uh, strip, strip now, like you have some.
But Barry is looking at this, I mean, since we're talking about the bond, and that was what I was thinking, before the bond, talking about Willow Street also.
I'll cover it under the, the next.
Go ahead.
You wanna discuss it now, or?
I think so, now we're discussing this. Under I have you, that's a street closure, so that would be the time, if you do.
Yes, go ahead.
In that street that, I mean, you say it's in a warranty, okay, y'all are gonna come back and do whatever you have to do with it, and if, after the year, what, if you're gonna have to come back, we're gonna have to come back again, and the proof, we ought to come back and redo it again, I mean, it needs to be done, correct, it's right now, I mean, it needs to be done.
Yes, before the contractor leaves, we're gonna make sure that they address all the issues, all the areas that are identified. After that, there's a one-year warranty that they provide to the city, and if anything, if anything comes up within that one year, then they have to be notified, and they have to address it, if they don't address it, then we go through the bonding. But that's just, those are the only recourse we have, like a sound check, or.
So is the one year started yet?
No, the one year gap's not started. So, once, that's why I was saying, we need to come up with a comprehensive business, so we can address all of those issues. All, once all those items are being addressed, then they're, file on, they're in the one year warranty. So we're still not in the warranty period yet, but actually, the longer it takes them to address it.
I have a concern, the, the, and we're seeing all these issues come up, so we, we should be more aggressive with what's being done for the streets. They're not gonna last. If they're gonna attach everything that's, uh, she's rocking right now, and it's stripped, is it a spot and all, all skippage? What's gonna happen down the street? Thirty, thirty, so. Our, uh, what I heard here, I don't understand, that each street is not gonna be the best, but it lasts basically two years.
I don't know where we said fifteen, drews, and there's, that's what we, the, the.
I mean, they should ask, with proper maintenance, because, and we had this discussion, Eagle with Hot Mix, you're gonna see cracks, once, you're gonna see cracks, and you're gonna have to come through, hope you know, and, and see all those cracks. That, what happened there, that's not cracking, that, that's just slippage, that's slippage, that's not a tack. There's no oil underneath it to make it stick, but through the hot mix, and that's why it's slippage. And my experience, that should, our slippage within the period that we're in now, it should start happening. So, if we go address these issues, and step a one-year maintenance period, I'm probably ninety percent certain that the majority, not all of those areas, that they might have missed, or that sure might have missed attack here, should pop up. And the only reason I'm not hundred percent sure is because there's always, even if you do it all, if you do it right, or the construction right, there's always that ten percent problem. You know, you have the, uh, garbage truck that turns somewhere, and if, if, things just happen, it's just a, matter of fact, you know, things just happen to streets.
Is this not already happened, and you all will be streets?
Will we be streets?
Or they will be streets. Are streets are done that you all, all?
Uh, it's happened sometimes, we've stood, and every time that that's happened, it's because the contractor, because we're not, yeah, we're not here a hundred percent of the time, we try to witness a lot of the work they do, but we're not here a hundred percent of the time. So if the distributor, or spread out distributor, go out, and we don't necessarily see them, or see that they miss it, there's no way that we can interpret that just by looking through the hot mix. The way we also see is, if something goes wrong with the pavement, and I can just go take a look at it, right off the bat, I can tell, okay, there's no, doesn't look like there's any oil underneath. The hot mix can make it stick, and I know there's an issue with something happening. But there's just, there's no feasible way for us to, to look at a ton of present of the work.
So I wanna come up with a comprehensive list, and before we do any work on Willow Street, that way you have more time to discuss this, is that I will meet with, uh, you know, Mr. Jackson, or Rudy, and the contractor, subcontractor, who's doing the work, and I'll have Mr. Beattie there also, so we can have a, a team plan and company to fix this, and get, get, uh, fix a few more of, of fuel, look for it.
Well, if, if, yes, okay, we're only gonna fix what is actually torn, and we don't know what's gonna happen to it, three years, four years, and you guys, you know, you're doing a different job, with the city, whatever, doing something else, uh, it's hard to get these people back and correct makes it a warranty one dollar. Should we not be more aggressive and study a look? We don't, we just don't trust what's happening on the street, and we, we, nobody knows what has happened on the street, you just know that there's a lot of slippage everywhere. Can we be more aggressive, say, that we do this whole, all this?
Let me, let me look into, let me look, maybe there's some testing that we can do, something that, uh, my, my neighbor gives a better idea.
Um, honestly, I, I, I just wish you'd advocate for us, and go back to the subcontractor, and, and address this issue, if it has to be built, the whole thing removed and rebuilt, I mean, so, so be it.
Madam, here, one, one of the things that Rick and I talked about, that Robert and I talked about this too, is looking at a percentage of what, of the failure that we've had at this point, and maybe at that point, telling a little bit, one-year warranty's not be good enough, you know, you're gonna have to give us more warranty than this because of that, or we can retain. Uh, I mean, there, we have, we have some other options, um, that we, we can get to a point where we're ready to, to, you know, we're, we're kind of trying to, you know, we, we've held off on this again because we're waiting till, you know, we want that timeline, that warranty to kick in at the last minute, and so that's why we've had to hold off on some of this, but at that point, I think that it's okay, if they have a twenty percent failure on this street, here, give us five-year warranty on this street, nine years, one-year warranty on this street. Because we do have, some of the streets are, they're also slippers too, so obviously, the machine was working right there, or we think it was working right there, but there, you know, we had some one-hundred-and-ten degree days, and if there was no slippage, probably it was, probably already would slip. But there is a chance when it gets hot again in the spring, maybe something else changes too, so if we get a two-year warranty or three-year warranty instead of one, I'll know how long better checks can catch on. I agree to make that case when we get them down here, and say, Al, to say, look, you know, you're gonna give us, you're gonna give us extra.
But I agree, and I see where you're coming from, it looks like I'm not advocating for the cities, but I can tell you this, we're, we're, we're gonna advocate for the city, and I try, I try to do as much, we have tried to do as much as we can to the brink of where they come in, and they say, hey, we're gonna file a lawsuit, and then that's when we come back to the city and say, hey, we, we have options, you know, what, what's in our best interest, trying to make. Yeah, we'll advocate for the, we'll advocate for the city, and I get their points, and I'll make sure that we come up with something. Robert, we can, but, but if we don't hold money back, we'll.
Yeah, you know, sure.
I mean, I, I will advocate for holding money back, and maybe keep it more than a year. So, or, or else we may, we redo those whole four areas.
So if that doesn't break the issue, you're gonna report back a failure rate on the streets, get, get an idea of what percent's good and what's bad.
Well, they also have a performance block, don't they?
Yeah, yes, and we can use that too. Well, we can use that within the year, we may, may, we can send them on too, that's another option. Robert, can we, can we, Robert, back up, right, so we can talk about the project, the wastewater treatment, I think he's gotta be back there at nine o'clock, so.
Okay. So, we're gonna, I have Robert finished, we'll go through the rest of the steps, and once with you, we're gonna jump to the last page real quick. Um, on that last block, we have, um, a, a list of, of project recommendations on things that, that we need to look at and move forward with. Um, I had Hector come over tonight, because we're, you know, of course, you know that one of the biggest things that we've done with this bond was get our wastewater treatment line to where it's actually almost normal. It's working in two thousand and fifteen now, instead of nineteen forty-two, um, with the work that we've done out there, so we've, we've come a long ways, and what we've done there is what we've done. And Hector's our, Hector's our main guy out there. The last part of, of the, the money that was left in that wastewater treatment line item, uh, what we had talked about doing there was the UV project, um, because our UV system is out of date. Um, Robert and I talked about some, some costs, we'll go over that with you in a little bit, but I just want Hector, I want Hector here, so you can hear from, the employee that has to try to keep this thing running every day, um, with the issues that we're having with the existing, um, UV system that we have, and, and the fact that we are a lot repaired, and so I'll let Hector talk to you real quick, so we can get a vital learning into the job, so, right there.
Uh, basically, it's not just out of date, it's, it's been demoxied, I mean, we, to get replaceable parts is out of question, I mean, and the parts that we can't get have crippled and burriness in price, and it's basically, what cost, used to cost seventy-nine dollars, now, actually, it costs over a thousand dollars, that's in the year. And just seven years ago, we replaced a board, that was twenty-five hundred, and now, to get that same board replaced, be twenty thousand dollars, the same board, I mean, that's how drastic this thing is. It's been demoxied, we, we got there back in twenty-fourteen, and I resubmitted, then we began in twenty-second, twenty-eighteen, that's a few months ago, let's see, I'll bring up the speed. They do allow five years, from, from the point that it's demoxied, that allows five years for replaceable parts, and then it starts disappearing, and so far, all that five little parts, they're totally gone, they're no, I mean, they're, they're not manufactured, there's no way of getting, uh, we need to know again, machine, that's getting more expensive that way. I mean, there's just, there's no, no light, you know, no current system we got, and so it's an everyday battle, every day's an everyday battle, it's like running a marathon in one day, so, I mean, it's, it's, we're there, and it's time to do something about it, I mean, and it's costly, I know this, but, I mean, it's not what we can do at this point.
Madam, here. Um, Hector, what, what makes them obsolete, why is, why?
Well, the manufacturer basically is telling me that they're obsolete, what makes them obsolete is that.
It's like your iPhones.
Yes.
They're not, they just come up with a newer model, and they want to get off, for the older model.
Who, who, the agency that mandates that we do this?
The agency, well.
Is it, is it an agency, or the fact that it's a manufacturer?
They're still manufacturing anymore, they, you know, manufacturing, you can't find parts for them anymore. It, it's just the manufacturer making you use the new models, so they.
Well, the, the, that new system's, they're been there fifteen, seventeen years, I mean, it's been there for a while.
Ninety-five.
Yeah, ninety-five, so it's not like, it's not like you bought the new iPhone last year, and now they're gonna put service on it, it's been there, it's, it's, it's served its purpose. Technology changes, the requirements of TCQ and EPA change, and so those new systems get that higher level of, of, of clarity, or whatever it is, and that system becomes obsolete, because it doesn't, it doesn't provide the same service as somebody that knows what's doing.
Is it still kind of the UV light driven?
It's just UV.
It's the light, it's the same.
Yeah, it's so hard, it's, I can't find parts, I can't find parts, and I'm, I, I've reached across Canada, and they said, it'll last five little pieces they have, and that's it, they're not gonna manufacture them anymore.
They build new models, and they don't make the older parts, so that's definitely a reason to do it.
And that's happening everywhere, all the cities that you guys.
Well, a lot of cities don't use.
Tell us the purpose of the UV, Hector. What's the purpose of the UV?
Disinfection. So like, you work with the chlorine gas, and it's just disinfection. A, a lot of people know use, uh, UV, and why I don't know, but chlorine is a lot more expensive than the UV disinfection. Chlorine, you know, charge essential.
That's the last step of the process before alarm comes, comes back out of the line.
This is ex alarm, it works with these batteries.
Correct, so, yes. You know, if you have fifteen, eighty-one inch.
And so, you guys got a copy of the notice that we had to send out to the citizens about a month ago, that I sent to you, that was what that was, we had one of those parts that wasn't functioning just right, and we had one reading, um, they are on data, came in audit, correct, TCQ was here for audit that day. So we had one reading, but they went back and found us for thirty days before, thirty days after, just that's the next reporting period, and we were on the line at point zero 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 one. But that's, that technology's just, it's, it's right on the edge, it'd be insufficient to, to really do.
So that's, so that report that we got, that, that isn't concerning drinking water?
Yeah. Well, the report you got in the mail this year on drinking water was our water, uh, what's it called, the?
CCR.
Yeah, the CCR, the Concerned Water Management Report, it was fine.
It hasn't mattered for you yet, you're going out every year.
Yeah, you put it out every year.
Well, the wording on that is a little, uh, some people have not looked at it for a while.
There was one, there was one notice that went out, that was from last, that was from last year, uh, by since you guys have had two weeks. Uh, I sent you guys out in two weeks. And it wasn't that we had an issue in our readings, it was that, that when we closed out last year's budget, we started a new budget. We had ten positions that we no longer had, we started a new budget. One of those positions happened to be our water supervisor, and he just happened to forget to send in the last set of reports the day before his job ended. And he's here for work. So because of that, instead of submitting twelve tests, we had to go do fifty tests. Uh, which cost us a significant amount of money, there was not one thing wrong with any of those tests. But we had to send out what I'm saying and we missed the report.
But the notice didn't say just that, it says, yeah, there's something wrong with the water.
Well, that, that one was the one for wastewater treatment, that was the drinking water. Uh, that, the one you're talking about was, it was the discharge from wastewater treatment. The day that they did talk, before they did the test right there, the, like, three months, four months, what? Sent out two, three weeks ago.
Is it a form letter or is it something that is not here?
It's one letter, basically, they, they gave us, they, they. We do it, we fill it in here, but it's a form letter from TCQ and that's certain requirements that have to be in it.
Because I understood why we got the letter, because we failed the report, but there's additional information, but it leaves instructions saying there's something wrong with the water.
Every time we see one of those, I think there's something wrong.
So can we be more specific to fail the report?
It should, I mean, it should.
It doesn't say that.
I'll look at it again, it should.
Ten, ten pages.
But, but, because there's seventeen, well, six pages on that, I think it was. And of course, we reduce it because it's cheaper to send it out, that way we can send it out to twenty-nine hundred people. Um, so maybe we should, maybe, or reduce it to the front back, we can get it on two sheets, and so it's normal postage. If we send it regular, then it's six sheets and it takes more postage and, and, but yeah, maybe we can, maybe we can, but we posted it on website, it's website, of course.
Did it say wastewater?
That one did. The other one, that one did, the first one was, well, C, the CCR and that one, plus the one from last year, so it was three actually that got out the last two months.
The last one that we did, we worked on in the competition?
Was wastewater. Okay, that was the, that was the one from last year? Yeah. So the last one that went out was the one without a reward. The one before that?
I got the one that's in pages.
That would be the one from wastewater. That would be the one, that wastewater. And it was, I think it was point zero zero one, it was some ridiculously small amount. But it said fifty-eight days, it says something about fifty-eight days of, because it goes twenty-nine days on both sides.
They had this three, this.
Yeah, that was wastewater. I'll look at it again. I, we're, we're required by TCQ to send out basically what they give, so I guess we can have to, I'll think that we might have that as a, or putting a one page synopsis on it.
So, so the recommendation is through the surface? We're talking about this is in the surface? The recommendation is to, since they don't need a system that the wastewater treatment, that's approximately four hundred thousand dollars out of that one point one surface.
And that will, so we're, we're probably eighty-five percent now of the wastewater, I mean. Compared to the fifteen percent we were at two years ago, the paddle, that was actually working the way it was supposed to be. We're probably at eighty-five, ninety percent by now, the UV will give us ninety-five, ninety-six percent, basically, for the whole. It'll get us very close to be honest.
So you're going to take the two hundred and seventeen, eighty-five?
Plus some.
Yes, the adjustment of the one point.
Yeah.
Well, that, that two hundred thousand is part of the one point one. Take the two hundred, two hundred thousand that's over, under that line item, the wastewater treatment, and add another, probably two hundred thousand into it.
Anybody have any other questions, Hector, so we can invite work? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. Okay, Robert, you can go back to work, sorry.
And then on this, the sewer trunk line, a budget of originally initially nine hundred thousand. After going through and looking at it, the major problems were, I think the big cross crossing, drainage crossing. They go from, from McDonald's in fifteen eighty-one. The sewer line that ran through the, through the box, each one of those is deteriorated, and that's when we had the problem with TCQ, when one of those lines cracked. And it contaminated that ditch and the DISQ. Then we had to go back and put in the generator because of TC, in order to meet the, uh, the parts of TCQ, we had to put in a generator for it. But with that said, when we just addressed those crossings, uh, I think it was approximately eighty-something thousand dollars. And we still have about six hundred and forty thousand dollars left over in that budget line. Uh, the next item is the water line crossing. That was, we were looking at addressing Allen Street. Oak Street, Oak Street, what am I getting?
You're in San Antonio?
And we still have an issue with Oak Street. That water line contingency, would have to be replaced immediately and moved maybe one street off. The estimate that we had given at the time was somewhere in neighborhood of one and a half to two million. We put money in this line item just as a placeholder. So as you can see, we've only used about thirty-six thousand dollars out of the six hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in the budget for that line item. So we have a surplus of five hundred and seven, five hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars in that line, line item. And then utilities and street improvement, we had budgeted four million. One of the last time we all saw here is the council approved Hackberry, Peach, Encino, and Widow. And not only David Street, but on Widow, it included, included the sewer, the water, the gas, and asphalt. For approximately a hundred and seventy-five thousand, which puts us at a, that's, that's for the negative a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars from. Because of this, that dish additional work. You can see there's, and then the water roofing project, budget twenty. That was for the addition of a valve near the hospital, so that, that way you could separate the system into, you know, the line road from the north part of town. You could still feed the hospital from the south side. Any questions that I was trying to go through? And then the same purchase equipment, of course, they went over about eight thousand dollars. Uh, there was some miscellaneous reimbursements, there was budget two hundred thousand, which is gone over by thirty-four thousand. But part of that reimbursement is actually fifty thousand dollars that is going to be used towards the match on the next TPT project, which is just ongoing, this is just underway. This is sort of our responsibility. Uh, so with that said, that's where the balance of one point one comes from, one point one million. So as according to city staff, our recommendation, and we just went over, one of them was a UV replacement for approximately four hundred thousand dollars. That's one of the line items, the piece well rehab, we ran some issues that come out through, or the, uh, the piece well. Every four or five years, the column, you have a column, the column piping, or the bowl, the pump hole. So you have the pool, the column, it's not every column piping going down, every so often, so you just have to replace those sections. And that's approximately thirty-three thousand dollars. The other item is the intersection, if we're addressed earlier, was set aside approximately a hundred thousand dollars for addressing the intersections.
How many?
Well, that's the lit, is that the?
With, with what we have in the general fund that we're using this year and that, that's going to get us about twenty, somewhere between twenty and twenty-two if they can. And then October first, we'll have more money available, and we should be able to finish all the ones that are, than we came up with on the progress.
There's some about bigger than others, so.
Okay, so it's going to cost a little bit different based on square meters.
And then the big one is the fifteen, fifteen eighty-one drainage ditch, ditch, that's approximately four hundred and fifty thousand, and that's what we discussed earlier. Was lining from Gideon Road all the way to Allen Street, was concrete bottom.
Kamal Street?
Do a search for it.
Kamal.
Or what other?
Kamal to Gillette.
Sorry, I didn't know, sorry. So what's the word, Kamal Street from Kamal to Gideon Road?
So that'll leave it, uh, leave you.
So we're, you would have the concrete bottom.
So no vegetation, trees?
No vegetation on the bottom, and then you have access points from the top of the ditch to the bottom. So that the city personnel can pull their equipment down there and just keep the, the side ditches clean and everything. What that would do is get the water from pretty much everything, all that northeast, northwest side of town, funnels down to that one point. So what that would do is help that water get out quicker. Of course, across the other side of Gideon Road, which is kind of maintained. Uh, after that's done, we have to go meet with the county and get them to address, address that street, but I don't know, you've probably been out there to pull the brush, washing machines and dryers.
So the thought, the thought of this fifteen eighty-one drainage project is, if you guys, when you give one drains a lot, and you want that fifteen eighty-one, it's not, you know, that ditch is not a bunch of water, water's not moving. I mean, it's silted in, there's material in there, there's brush in there, there's trees. And so we don't have the appropriate grade in there, it's, it's kind of holding up in areas and it's pushing it back. And if you, if you're, if you're holding water from, from fifteen eighty-one or from Kamal, all the way to the, to the sports complex, if that water's not moving right. That's a lot of head pressure pushing back against those drains and keeping that water from moving. And so if we, if we get that grade in right, get a good bottom there where that water can just come out and get out of there. Then that helps drain all those areas that we're talking about, it helps that, those eighteen inch pipes actually put eighteen inches of water in there. Every, you know, there's a full flow coming out instead of just being a little portion because it's backed up all the way to the road that I. Um, and so if we can get it moving and get it out of there, I think that's going to, that, that may have the best potential to drain those areas and house faster than doing anything else that we can do.
Yeah, like I said, I think one of the big issues is they can't get down there to address, or they can't clean up down there, and you see it, there's just brush and everything, and it just, it gets caught at the opening of the box open. So that restricts your flow and just backs out things from there. So with this, we're doing a lot of the same, not only maintain the, the bank of the, the ditch. But it should be, we're getting there during dry weather, when everything settles out, we're just cleaning everything out. So then when you, when it does rain, you don't get all that brush just packing up against the box openwards and just creating a, making the situation worse.
And then the water drains where?
I mean, it's going to go over to Gideon Road and it crosses, it crosses thirty-five and then, uh.
Goes out. Goes out by the.
I just did it to Gideon.
At the restaurant.
There goes, there goes a bunch of tanks.
There's a tank, there's a tank across here, the highway.
Oh, okay, and then it just keeps going in there.
What about the, what about the one that goes to Bases Road? There's a drainage there too that has a lot of, uh, grass, all that stuff's going to come to that.
Oh, which, where?
Right there across the street from the one, the one across the street from Brothers.
I'm just saying.
The other side, that drainage too, is that?
That lead down there is a concrete water, that one, not, not all the way to, it starts right there, you just go with it. It's like, if I just turn it, it has concrete, but it doesn't have concrete all the way up. One more, you're from off screen.
Is there a way you can include?
You can go all the way back to, what is that?
Z Street?
Z Street.
Z Street? Z Street?
And then it goes on right.
Is that, that little ditch by Albert's house is, 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 uh?
Yeah, and it runs in the street, that one's over the, the concrete, and it ends right there, and it's grass. But it used to do the same thing that it's doing further down, it used to hold everything back, and then what else is used to cover up? Now that it's covered, you see how fast it passes, I think that's good.
Robert, if, if the county doesn't clear out their part, it's going to.
Cover it all.
I think it'd be pretty obvious, someone has to notice that.
They won't have, they won't have a choice.
Well, what, what do you think, can you come in?
I think, I think when ours is done, and the first time TCQ goes wastewater treatment plant and sees our concrete ditch and sees that jungle, they will.
And they would, they would make theirs look like ours, it's now just cleared out. And that would, that would help the flow a lot.
Obviously, it's cleared out, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, there's, that, that ditch down there, there's, I mean, there's, 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 there's trees, furniture and appliances, and I mean, there's all kinds of stuff down there.
Forty-four trees in there.
Yeah.
How about they get the one in Trinity, uh, Trinity, you know, the power plant road that is down also?
That would be through the box openers, doesn't it?
That'd be through the box.
Yeah, so it ends up there.
Right, I don't know, but it's, that's not three though.
Yeah, no, it doesn't have function.
Power plant?
Yeah.
Yeah, power plant does.
Well, right, right at the intersection. Yeah, right at the intersection.
Not, not down the road, like the ditch.
One minute, was plenty of that?
Yeah, that has concrete, where it, it was about forty, fifty feet. Where it feeds in, where it captures everything, and then it goes into the street.
That's where the box.
But it, you see how much water is bringing in from way over there. So all this water, it comes over here to, to Kamal Street and fifteen eighty-one, this was all, it was trying to come over. And then you bring it in from Garcia, so that's why it's not going down as fast as it's supposed to.
And then we got all that stuff in there.
The green on.
So I have the green, and as you guys call it, the box openers.
So it'll serve two purposes in doing that, one, it's going to make that water flow a lot quicker. Uh, one, when we do the concrete, if we do, if you guys approve of the concrete, it's going to be on grade, so it'll actually, we may have to go in there and do some filling, and then it's, but it'll be on grade, so it's setting downhill. And we'll get it out of there, that's one thing. Uh, two, it's going to make it a lot easier to maintain it, uh, which is going to cut a bunch more time, because when we start doing highways, that's one of the ones that takes the biggest amount of time. Is, is trying to get that one there because it's always wet. We end up getting tractors stuck in there, we end up getting, I mean, it's, it's a pain trying to make anything. So it's going to make sense, it's going to make that whole part of town, I mean, it'll make that look a lot better as well.
All right, so you're going to make it like deep to where water's going to relax?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we're just going to match the bottom of the box over, at the bottom of one box over, you just put concrete on the bottom.
He was, he was wanting.
You can't make it any deeper, the bottom of the box over.
Something else about that ditch already, the fifteen eighty-one side of it is concrete, because textile didn't have to protect the road. So when you come out of the road, it rolls down to the bottom, it's concrete already, so we just have to tie in the bottom down there and come across the bottom and maybe do.
Come over there.
Yeah, just.
Or maybe convert a wall, we're probably there.
And then we could do, and each one of those, right before each one of the bridges, just do a concrete approach one down there, so we can get the little block in under it. Just something enough to get the, where we get the front end over down there.
Hey, but we don't have to get attached, uh, approval or anything, right?
I don't think, that's ours.
It's ours.
I think that's ours.
But if we have to have a board, the textile, we're going to get their approval.
And they're, and they look, but I like several texts.
I don't see any issue.
Doesn't text doctor any jump into our ditch? Don't we have literature?
Hey, your water.
Hey dude, you got, you got eighteen lines, come in, pack it up.
Yeah, I agree with that. So a couple of things real quick on that, well, Robert kind of went, I'll just put, so we're clear on what those are. The piece well rehab, we, we try to include enough money in our annual budget every year, our general fund budget, to make sure that we're able to, to, to work on at least one of those wells every year. We had two wells that the pumps went down this year that we had to fund out of that, uh, general fund budget. So we put about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in there for well rehab every year, and those two pumps cost us about a hundred thousand dollars right off the bat. So we didn't really have any money to do anything extra. Good part about that is, we, we, the way we did it, we purchased two new pumps because we didn't have any spares. Uh, so we purchased two new pumps, the pumps that we took off, when we repaired this next year, they'll be a lot cheaper than fifty thousand dollars a piece, it costs us seven, eight thousand dollars a piece a year to get repaired. And now we'll have spare pumps sitting on there. So if either, either size well that we have, if they go down, we'll be able to go grab it and put it on there, and no way we'll have to worry about that. Um, but, uh, these were, these opened down, we need to get it going again. Luckily, the rain came, when it did, this happened right when the rain started, so we didn't have the same draw on the water system that we did have it. Uh, so we haven't had to be in a rush to get it fixed, uh, because right now nobody's irrigating or nobody's watering their yard or doing anything else. Uh, so we'd have a little bit of time on this one. But that line item for the years already eaten up. Uh, it could wait until October first, uh, we can pay for it out of next year's, out of next year's general fund budget. But with it being that, I mean, that's thirty-three thousand out of one point one million, we can't dump out and quit before we. Uh, that Oak Street water line repair, Robert, I talked about that a little bit, we had a long discussion in one of the bond workshops about taking that main, main line that's on Oak Street and moving it either to the alley or moving it to Allen Street. Uh, because of the fact that it's under textile road, and every time you want to work on it, it's a pain to be able to work. One, it's a pain to get textile to let you do it, because they want you to do it on Sunday night at three o'clock in the morning, uh, because they don't want their road impeded. Two, when you take part of their street out to work on that water line, you've got to put it back to their standards, which is the way, what, what we do on regular city streets. So we talked about moving it, but it was over a million, it was over a million dollars. But if, 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 when you're on Oak Street right now, right there in front of the old city hall, there's that popple right there, and that's because we have a water line underneath that's leaking right there and it's starting to kick in. That's why we have to get that fixed, or they're not going to let us get by, we're not fixing that. We had it lined up to fix it two weekends ago on the holiday weekend, uh, we're going to fix it on Saturday. I'll think, yeah, and that's one that you guys are worried, it was pretty approved for us to do this in that project. But we, we put it back on here because we want to make sure that they're all insured, we haven't done it yet. Uh, we had it lined up to do it, then they switched and they wanted us to do it on Sunday night, and the contractor, Monday being the holiday, was going to have to pay different, and that wasn't the way he had told us he would do it. So we kind of had to put it off because they chased, textile chased us the last, so we're hoping to have the next one at least. Yeah, it's happening, so we'll dig up that portion, we have to do the textile block, the way they very clean their roads, we have to go through all that. We'll dig up the smallest portion that we can to get down there and fix it, hopefully we'll only find one leak. And if we do that, we've got to fill the whole thing back up with concrete, and that's what makes it so expensive, you can't just go put, we can't put dirt and compacting, it's got to be full, we'll fill all the way back up to the top. Now, if we do that, we gotta fill the whole thing back up with concrete, and that's what makes it so expensive, you can't just go put, we can't put dirt and compacting, it's gotta be full, we'll fill all the way back up to the top, and then the ropes, the road surface back to their standard.
Eight inches, they want eight inches of, of asphalt.
So, that's what that was, and then the intersection project, um, again, we talked about that a little bit earlier, um, I mean, this, that's a hundred thousand dollars to get those, you know, another probably sixteen or eighteen intersections done, it's gonna make the road a lot better in town, a lot less complaints about it, I think the majority of the complaints we get are the intersections there, at the, at those intersections that are torn. So, if you have any other questions, Robert, do you have anything else?
No, the other, I have another estimate here, passing around. That was for adding, extending the eighteen inch storm sewer on Garcia Street to Liza, and then putting in additional inlets, and that came with about a hundred forty-five thousand. So, there's a hundred seventeen thousand estimated to be left over, uh, so our recommendation is gonna be is, is go through the project, see if there's any funds, you know, once you get there off the bid, put a month of bid, if they come in lower than expected, and there's money left over. Maybe we don't have to do the nine inlets that I was talking about, or the fifty percent of inlets, but at least extend the nine to Liza, and maybe add a couple more inlets. Again, that'll help, get the water in the pipe, but once you have a big, you have a big rain event, that's not to say that it's still not gonna overflow the, the curb and get somewhere else.
Yes, yeah.
That was my question.
Oh.
I, I can, you know, that was my question on that project, and, uh, since the water has kind of deteriorated on that street, whatever street. Uh, I know it's not likely to be redone, definitely, but maybe keep the past up there.
We got a, we got a... That, that, particularly that, that intersection right here is real bad.
There's a lot of problems in that.
The whole, I think we're gonna, we're gonna...
How do you put that intersection in there?
Pro intersection?
I would say we address it with the list, with that hundred thousand, which is, if it was just on the list, then...
What's that? What intersection is that, that's?
Ask one annual, and... If you're gonna demand it, we'll build it up, you know, it's, it's an intersection.
Yeah, but that street itself, it's, there's a lot of problems in that.
Oh, yeah, you're gonna just tear that all up, it just...
Water just kind of does it.
Oh, yeah, waters, they, waters...
Would, would you maybe put some concrete instead, instead of asphalt?
Expensive.
Probably just...
They need under.
I'd rather, I'd rather that intersection, like, build it up in the middle a little bit, where it forces it to go off to the curb. And that's really all you can do, is just make sure the city comes through and the curb work that goes from, um, whatever to then. If you just, every time it rains, you gotta make sure you sweep the curb, because there's very little rain, and if you get any silt rubbed up in there, it doesn't help the situation.
But you want to do, now, the intersection is an intersection project, and then once that portion of it's done, and we may cut that side up a little bit farther, and extend that a little bit farther, and then we could, if, if there's area that, that the road, the whole roadhead goes deteriorating, we'll just move that intersection back a little bit farther. And see how much that we can get, and if it just gets the popple part, we can put natural, we can fix our stuff.
But if you can actually have a whole intersection, probably another thirty feet this, or each way.
I think it's a whole street, it's just like maybe half the street where the water gets captured.
I know you're right, it's right, there's an intersection on, on, on the east side of the one I'm arguing, east side of one I'm arguing, and about thirty feet of candy, is it candy? I said, stop, oh, straight on candy.
Well, we, when we put the intersection list together, we just said, okay, estimate this much for intersections, like, some of those intersections are smaller, some of them are bigger, and it, kind of planning on, you know, I won't kind of wash out big areas and those. But, so, we're, we know we've got to agree that they're actually pretty big, uh, as we do, and we count on, there's gonna be really, really big areas that we did, so that can be one of those really big areas.
So, even when we do this, it's not gonna leave you anything, right?
I don't think much.
Not when you get a big rain event, and this, but it will help the situation of, that it'll go over, and then... We can jump through to fifteen eighty-one drainage, once things start going, and things start flowing, it's gonna help to get out of there quicker, so it doesn't stay on the street, and then mess up the street, that's what we're trying to do.
And get the apartments to kind of...
We'll, we'll meet with the apartments. Uh, I mean, so, my, my thought of this, and Robert and I were talking about this this afternoon, even if we put in a twenty-four inch, if we can put in a twenty-four, thirty-six inch line, until you fix the fifteen eighty-one drainage, it's not gonna make any difference. So, let's, let's start there and fix that, and see, yeah, maybe, maybe once we get that fixed, maybe, maybe that stuff moves faster, and maybe that fixes the problem. But if there's already an eighteen inch full pipe, and then we can add forty more, that's not gonna make any difference. Uh, if we're already, we already have that pipe capacity, it doesn't matter what we do, or what's gonna happen, we're gonna do something different to get it there, so the best thing we can do is get the water out there as fast as we can get it out, which the fifteen eighty-one project does.
So, if there's any money left over, I'd agree to adding inlets, and maybe expanding to Liza, and getting additional, that should help the situation.
If it's a two or three inch drain, if it's a six inch drain, not making any difference.
And then we can meet with, 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 just meet with the, with the department, see what we can come up with.
Well, they, well, they got four minutes, and one, ten more minutes to see what we can actually...
Yes, we, we're in Austin.
So, so, and the interim, we'll just hold off on all this.
On that?
Yeah.
On that one, yes.
Yeah, because we want to see where we're gonna put things up. He just wanted to see if we were looking to do something on that stream. I just didn't want to present that to you as a fix for the whole, all of there, that there's a bigger issue than any of our...
So, if you, if you guys don't have any other questions, one, I would ask is that you approve the project recommendations first and before, that's also so we can get started on those projects right there.
With including that section from one forty Pomastor to Z Street or whatever, that's where you do it, just...
What, what street is that?
All $700,000 in utilities fund this year. I think we're a good place. We're gonna have a little bit left over reserve if we have an emergency. We'll have something where we can go. Know we have something to do about a little volume capacity out of the annexation if we had to. I think we're okay. I think we're okay with it.
Yes, sir.
I think we'll be okay.
Yes, sir.
Well, that we approved on making a 2016 sale of our project. Planted to include. You'll be replacing this water treatment plant. This is what we have. Section project fifteen million range.
Okay, one at Z Street range.
And what?
Yeah, Z Street.
And Z Street range. And Oak Street water will be here for total of one million. Is that even?
They've now read out. What did it say?
There's a motion by Councilman Ed Hernandez and second by Councilwoman Hernandez. All in favor?
Madam Mayor, let the record show that I'm voting for it because I'm nervous. We're all nervous.
Motion approved unanimously. Okay, moving on to discussion of possible action awarding the bid for Polo Patino Park renovation. May I have a second?
Motion to discuss.
May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor, Council, since you guys got messages in today. We talked about this the last week or immediately that the RFP for the next part of the renovation of the park and for the park was coming out and then we would have some stuff for you today. It was nice to meet you. Couple things, we'll start off with right off the bat. We actually received a lot of really good proposals. Those proposals were back on the table since yesterday morning. You guys can come in and look at it if you wanted to look at it. We already received the bids were reviewed by myself, our parks director and our finance director to make sure that we know all the requirements that we had. And came in here with something to show you guys and present to you guys. One, because if you go through all of the proposals, it's a box full of stuff and they sent a ton of information. So we tried to pare down as much as we could for you. The bids we received, we received eight bids from eight different companies. There were four of those bids that you have this evening. You should have some information to play me. There were four of those bids that were complete bids. Water be by complete bids. The RFP we put out had the requirements for the two to five playground, the five to twelve, five to twelve year old playground. Special needs playgrounds. The new canopy over, the tennis courts, the barbecue areas to be fixed, the fitness trail to be played in. What was the other? Oh, the splash pad.
We don't have that.
You don't have that? So there's eight bids. There were four of them, were actually complete bids. It included all of the proposals. There was a couple that were not complete and a couple were just splash pads. A couple more bids. One didn't include the splash pad. One didn't include the splash pad of the shade. So we started with four bids that came in that were completed. So we crashed them before. We evaluated those bids based on the cost, the quality of the equipment that they use, what we thought was best fit for the park over there. And then if they'd given us any bonus, anything as a bonus as they were allowed to. Obviously, they didn't, nobody included any bonuses. We gave up the scoring criteria based on that where everything was weighted equally. At the end of it, based on our scores, we came out with all aquatics as the top presenter very closely. Followed by, I think the second placement was Craftsman. The third placement was Park Place and T F Harbor. We'll kind of talk about those a little bit real quick. There were some significant differences between the top three. Except we had four complete bids. We dropped off T F Harbor right off the start because they were about a hundred, I think a hundred five thousand dollars more than the other three bids. The other three bids were very close together in cost ranging from two hundred sixty-six thousand to two hundred seventy-eight thousand. As we went through, reviewed the bids, there were some things that we noticed in them that were where we made our differentiation between the three entities that applied. The all aquatics proposal, there were some significant differences and you'll see them as we go through the pictures. But there were some significant differences that really stood out to us. Those, the individual playground areas, and you'll see these in the photos here a little bit for the big one piece playground area. The equipment that all aquatics included had large shade, had large shade areas over the top of it. Where the other ones did. That was one thing we liked. The quality of the equipment, all very similar as to the warranties and how long the oil that came with it. But those big shade areas, one thing that we really liked about theirs, especially here, you know, summertime when those kids are in those parks without the shade. That makes a big difference. The splash pad design of the all aquatics pad, and just sort of consider it, all aquatics is the same company as the company that built our original splash pad. Their splash pad design is actually an in-ground built splash pad. Some of the other ones, they're not in-ground, but they're above-ground built splash pads. So it's the quality, your micro quality is a little better. And the biggest, I think the biggest thing to me, I think Brad too, when we get done, I'll give Brad a chance to talk about this. I think one of the biggest things that we saw and the difference in the pre-bids, the exercise equipment, the adult exercise equipment that would be along the walking trail. The stuff from all aquatics is moving equipment. It's like skiers and like a bicycle type thing where you actually get on it and move. Where all the rest of it was like one piece deals, like a pull-up bar or a setup bench that's a curb bench or something like that. The exercise equipment with all aquatics was significantly better than the exercise equipment we saw in the others. So they were actually the bid that came in in the middle being about four thousand dollars higher than the lowest bid. But the difference in the equipment, it was far away, much better equipment than what we saw from the Park Place. On that Craftsman bid, they didn't have the play area shading. Splash pad design on the Craftsman bid was actually a square splash pad. We had a round place to put it, so it didn't really fit where we wanted to put it. And they have the one piece exercise stations. On the Park Place deal, again, there was no shading. Their pad was the above ground pad, or the splash pad was the above ground type, so it didn't really fit with what we're trying to build on the property working over there. And they have the one piece exercise equipment as well. So here's kind of an overview that shows the majority of how that would be set up. So everybody knows where the big round area is over there right now. When the Maya temple's out, the one slide that burns, everybody's waiting in some time. The Maya temple will be taken out, the one slide that burns, everybody will be taken out. That's where the splash pad will go incorporating the existing, like half wallets there for people to sit on and be able to do stuff with. And they'll be able to bring the water to that and drain it from right there. The two play areas, you can see we've got, there's play areas, there's a play area here now. It's got the old swings and the old stuff. This will be the smaller pieces for the small kids and we'll see what the pieces look like here in a minute. And then the two, this play area right here would be the two to five play areas. So they're right there really close together. So if parents have small kids, they can sit right in here and they can watch kids on both sides. And they don't get separated. Then this is the play area for the five to twelve of them. There's a swing center here for the five to twelve. Actually, right off the edge here is where we have the special needs play area. We've kind of separated it away from the rest of it so that most of the kids aren't being picked off while they're playing over in that area. And we'll show you the equipment going in there. This is the canopy area where the, where the all the old tennis courts. It will be set up as an additional area for people to be able to do some other things in there. The two to five play area, you can see what it looks like over there on the side. You can see these deals on top. These are the shades, the shade, the shade goes over the top of it to help shade that, which was different from all the rest of it. You can kind of see what they look like up there. The two to five play area and the five to twelve play area, they're one piece units. So they're similar to like the unit of the sports complex. But they're significantly larger. I mean, these are big areas. You can see the measurements on up here, how they lay out and the different pieces that they have and go anywhere. So that two to five play area, which is off the map, off right there by the sidewalk where we talked about, that's a piece of equipment they proposed to go in there. We've also got some other parts to go in there around where the swings are at for the little kids, for little guys to play on there. Some jumpers and teer totters and balance beams. Those three chairs sit and spin and move around so that a small baby can have, a little small child, those are going to do some other things. Other things with them there as well. That set of swings on the left will be the swings for the small kid area. It's the basically the car seat swing. So you can put a really small child in there and push it, you don't have to worry about falling out. And then over in the five to twelve area, this will be the type of swings that will go over the five to twelve area. The play area for the five to twelve, again, I mean, this thing's sixty feet long and forty-five feet wide. It's large. And it's got all kinds of different interactive things for the larger kids, tubs and slides and monkey bars and water. All kinds of external pieces that come up. Again, extra shading up on top. Also, in the summertime, it's not here as hot as what something without significant shading would be. The special needs area, all the special needs proposals were actually almost identical. And so I'm assuming that they gave you, there's certain pieces of playground equipment that fit. All of them are active in some way. That they still have a talk to, they talk it along and the sound comes out so they can hear it. The propellers, stuff that they can spin, it's got a driving wheel type deal where they get up there and honk all the way. And present they're driving a clock down here where they can learn the numbers of time and stuff like that. And then the sand digger has a little sandbox area. It's a mounted deal for a child, a wheelchair and come up and they can actually turn that thing. They can sweep it up to one side and move it to the other side and put it back down. So those are the pieces that will be in the special needs play area. For the adult fitness trail, this is the type of stuff that we're talking about. This is what the significant difference was to all of us in the aquatics. You see almost everything there has moving parts. So you're actually exercising multiple parts of your body at the same time. And those would be stationed along the walking trail with the walking path marked out saying, okay, you come in, you start here, you've been here, this is how far you walked. And then if you spend this much time on each piece of equipment, that's how many calories. So you got, you got, where you lift your stuff. This is basically a seat where you lift your, you're lifting your own body. Where you side to side, where you're moving side to side. Basically a skier and having a binder over here. Then it does have a set of pull, a set of pull-up marks where if somebody wants to just do, you know, they have the little tie up. They want to, you know, they want to swing on them, wrap their legs over, hang upside down, whatever, they can do whatever. If they want to do things that I can do, they can go do it. That's fine.
One question.
I have one question. Are these exercise, are the adults, are they going to be like, when it rains, they're not going to get rusted out or anything?
I'm sure, I'll have to do some regular maintenance on them. I'm just like anything else. But they're maybe outside.
They'll be powder coated?
They'll be powder coated too. But that internal part, you know, if they move, it rolls on something. So they're probably going to have a reserve or something. The canopy itself, so over the old tennis court, it's a two-part canopy to replace. So we'll take that fence down and get a two-part canopy over that court. And then there's some powder coated tables to underneath where there's extra areas over there for people to go gather and do whatever they want to do over there. We'll talk about it at the end of this. One of the other, one of the other parts that we talked about for this is on those four corners of the old tennis court is getting like big barbecue pits, one on each corner. So you have basically four family galleries underneath those canopies and get that barbecue pit out from underneath the canopy where they can cook out there on those. But then they can sit or even have shade or anything. We also have those picnic areas that are there where the barbecue pits are all gone and the tables are pretty much all gone. So we're replacing all those tables and barbecue pits with new tables and barbecue pits. I think there's ten of those scattered around different parts over there. So that'll all be replaced. There's some wooden benches, I think. All the barbecue pits, most of the racks are missing out. These, the racks don't come off. There's no way to get them out without a torch. So that will set up each one of those. Basically, there's another, there'd be fourteen areas for families to sit out there and be able to help with the development. This is a design for the splash pad. All the splash pads, the type of splash pad was the same thing. They're very similar to the one that's in the, this is the same style as what's in the Pearl and San Antonio. So this is the one where you push the button and you stand there and you figure out where to shoot up and you run over. And the interaction is going to the jets and start up off. So it doesn't have something that dumps water, it doesn't have anything, anything that moves. But it's the one that squirts up out of the, that squirts up out of the ground. And they squirt all different directions. And it's the same thing. It's got the button on the side over here. Button down here is what they activated, like what we have over there. And then it starts going off in series and the kids follow around. That's the thing about the splash pads. And what I like about the splash pads from this company is it makes them move around on that pad and follow water. They can't just stand in one place and just stand there and get wet. So they're getting exercise while they're on the pad at the same time. Of course, already in progress, the skate park that was approved before, the concrete company is out there right now. Of course, as soon as they got, artists are arranging and they haven't been able to get great progress on it. But that's in progress right now. And as soon as we can do the final, once they put the padding, the rest of it will go really quick because the parts are already, the parts are already here. To put it together, we just got to get enough dry weather to be able to put the padding. So our recommendation is that you accept the bid of all aquatics in response to the whole Pino Park RFP and the amount of two hundred seventy thousand, three hundred eighty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents. With construction to begin within sixty days. This will bring the total approved expenditures for renovations of all Pino Parks of four hundred twenty thousand, three hundred eighty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents. And then we'll continue to work on the other part of it. Before you have a question, I'll walk you down in there. Again, there's still other parts that we talked about. It's the barbecue pits to go around the corners of the deal. The electricity, however, we're going to try to figure out electricity over there. Should we have better electricity over there for festivals? And new bathrooms and brands order on bathrooms right now. We're looking at the possibility of premium bathrooms being brought in and set up. But we're trying to get some numbers.
Trash receptors? Trash can, trash receptors?
Yeah, trash cans will be something.
Are the, I have a question. On the picnic tables, are you going to mount, mount them to where?
No, they were tied down. No, they were tied down.
Mr. Jackson said that the pits that we had are good. And they're all similar as far as the canopies and picnic tables and all that. But like I said, what caught my eye was the exercise equipment. That's going to be really, really good for the public. And also the splash pad. And your playground equipment, which has the shade covers and all that. So that's going to be real good, a real added point for the kids. So like I said, I agree upon all aquatics. So I think that could be the best one for, for the city.
And we've totally ruled out a walking trail. It's too expensive.
Well, so the walking trail on the outside was a quarter of an adult. Was what we looked at. So that's, so one of the recommendations that we heard from the groups that came in and looked was like, yeah, great sidewalk system in the park. Lay out a walking trail and sidewalk system. And put those exercise stations along that. And say you start here at one of the gates, whichever entrance it says starts here, follow the lines. And go here, work out on this piece of equipment for two minutes. Go here, walk out on this one for two minutes. Go here, come around that corner, come back over here. When you get back here, you walk this far, you burn this many calories. They go and burn three times many calories in three days.
I have a question. Landscaping. Do you have any budget for landscaping?
No, we out change. So around each one of those deals, that's one thing that doesn't really show in the picture. So around each one of the play areas or whatever, it has a requirement. There has to be the engineer who has to go down the ground so the kids follow there. So the park's going to look substantially different when all those pieces are built anyway, because each one of them has that kind of around them. One of the things that we kind of talked about was, okay, let's see what it looks like when they get it all built. And then let's go back and look at, and try to do. We've got a bigger landscape right here. I mean, this guy can make stuff look good. And we don't have enough money to budget work. We want to add in some trees or we want to add in some other stuff. We can, we can do that stuff every year. Let's start landscaping. And maybe sure that we have water available, you know, nothing. Because you start adding more trees, maybe you need to put in water or you need to put in whatever. So because some of those areas, I mean, if the playgrounds are sixty by forty, then your mud area around like you're talking about an area that may be eighty by sixty. When you get your number five, and this is going to change the way the park looks. And then once we see that, we can figure out what makes it different.
So we anticipate, the anticipation time for finish after?
I'm going to say probably a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty days once they start it. It'll take sixty days to get started once spring breaks. So by the time spring break comes, those kids are going to have a break mark.
Say that again?
By the time spring break comes, they should have a break mark.
We also talked about parking out. Where is the parking?
Okay, so what we talked about on parking at this point, we haven't really, we haven't really addressed that yet. On that end, out there where the park is out, I'm actually adding another, another area there. Because now that old yard area that's there really isn't yard change. But you've got the big sycamore trees and we don't want to lose the big sycamore trees. But you've got that area outside of that where we could look at additional parking.
Can we now incorporate when we're doing Little Street?
We might do it too. That deal at that point, I don't know if it works.
Deal with what?
That, that memorial out there, I still need to get that done.
Well, I mean, being since contractors are going to be out there already, doing Little Street, why couldn't?
We could have looked at that.
Start doing the base and.
What if you should look at it? You bet. The biggest time look at is going to be here. Say those traffic costs and starting costs. What's your look at?
So did anybody reach out to the family about that?
Not yet.
No?
No. We had the fence up and it was behind the fence and nothing was really happening because of that. Contractor came in, the contractor that did the fence actually came and took it down early, earlier than they were supposed to. So that fence was, that temporary fence was put up by the demolition company. They were doing demolition on the building. We had a six month contract on that, on that fence. That's what they had to do was they, it was a six month contract. So when it was done, we asked them to leave it because it had been paid for already. About a month prior to, about six weeks prior to the end of that contract, that fencing company reached out to the demolition contractor. And said, do you guys want to keep it or not? And he's like, we're not paying for it. Talked to the city. So we talked to me and I said, well, we're not going to extend it because if they want a fence around the skate park of the building, they need to include that in their cost. We shouldn't be paying that. So we're not going to extend it, but leave it till we're done because we paid for it in six months. They can't take it down until they're, when they took it down, something happened a little more. It's not, it's not there anymore. So I don't know, I don't want to think I did something like that. I do something else. I think it was. It's like, I don't know.
Y'all aren't going to eliminate the parking that was already there before, right?
No, we're going to extend that. We're actually going to try to make, probably make it twice as big, about three times as big. Because we do have that area, the big sycamore trees from there out, you know, the building came out that way before. Now, there's no building out there. The skate park is going to be behind that. So you've got all that open area. So that's either going to be all grass where we take part of that and make some additional parking there.
But not the ones on the side, right? Either? The ones that are on the side.
No, no. Oh, yeah, yeah. That was the, that was the. And that was another thing with the walking trail, put the walking trail on the outside, they're going to mess with the outside part as well. And the cost is just way too much.
The existing fencing, what?
The existing fencing is not that bad. And the new fencing was pretty expensive. So we'll look at, at maybe modernizing the gates and doing some stuff like that.
Yes.
Don't want to make it where it's not inviting. And that fence is kind of inviting. I mean, it's not so big that you don't feel like you're in jail here in the park.
You kind of, you said, what kind of parking area are you talking about that you said we're still thinking about?
Well, so we got those for those ten smaller areas that are out there. Then where the, where the tennis courts are. Those four corners, putting a regular, like you have in your backyard, a regular smoker type pit that splits around on them. And we'll get those built, just we can get those built for those that are just.
Is it possible to do something like France Park instead of those four?
For that one?
Yeah, just one big one for fundraiser and stuff like that.
But that is, yeah, something where it's not a fundraiser. First time they get it, nobody else will be able to use it. For fundraiser, I mean, for fundraiser, they use all four. If we get four.
Whatever it works.
Or maybe one on each end. Maybe just put two bigger ones instead of four smaller ones. And then there's fundraiser, they can.
Second question, playhouse and basketball.
Basketball courts exist like this. That's a nice basketball, also basketball court town.
New, new.
New goals.
New goals.
Nets.
Basketball, new goals, more nets.
Little power.
Still has a net I put on it. Two.
How are those, how are the goals?
Square. They're spread on the top.
What condition is it?
What, in good condition?
They're in good condition.
They come out from the, yes. It's not the report.
It's not the report. They could be sprung, maybe.
They're trashed, we can do that, we can do that ourselves. Basically, it gets used for so much other stuff. You know, you put paint down on that floor and then you have to keep one in there putting, you know, you're dragging the bad equipment over and you're dragging whatever else anybody else is in there. But we can, we can look at, I mean, that can be a regular, that doesn't need to be a part of this. That can be a regular function of.
Lighting, uh.
Lighting, lighting electricity is part of that. That was part of the electric, I would recommend lighting, but that'd be part of it. So maybe lighting. So that's brighter. But we have to be careful about getting it too bright because then the neighbors are going to get upset.
Sand, sand.
We have, don't we have a sandlot over there?
Well, we have all, we have all the cats there.
Think you have stevies? And lights?
Might have something there.
The chickens?
Might have something there with the scooter.
I think we need something for the chickens, so.
What, is it advanced?
I think it's white, right?
The great pier, small foil around it.
Okay.
Okay, so what we need to do is if you guys approve, we have a motion to accept the bid.
Okay, we can attain a motion if there's no further discussion.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the bid for all the parks at two hundred seventy thousand, three hundred seventy-sixty-four for the.
There's a motion on the table. May I have a second? Second by Councilwoman Ed Hernandez. All in favor? Motion carried unanimously. Item Q, discussion of possible action regarding wifi agreement. May I attain a motion to discuss, please?
Motion to discuss.
All in favor? Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor, Council, this item is before you. We have an existing agreement that basically is very close to the same agreement. The issue is the company that we have with a box hole for that, five times, how many times since the agreement was signed. So this is kind of, that makes the agreement. I'm going to let them discuss what they do, but I will tell you this before they start their discussion. Basically, what this agreement is, is the city allows them to utilize our water towers to put their, their receivers on, their wifi receivers on. And in exchange, we give free wifi service in where we ask for it. Prior to the time I came here, the wifi service was utilized, I think, one time at the fire station. Nobody was really utilizing it. But since I, in the last six months or so, we've been working on this, we've added the free wifi in at the civic center. So we actually have free wifi out here now. The next step in the plan is to have free wifi on the tower here at City Hall, it's a tower on the back. So we can shoot it over Main Street. So then our Main Street issue, there's free wifi. So if the Main Street starts to grow and improve, people can be out there and they'll have free wifi there. And then we've got a couple other ideas for additions as well. So we're here to talk about.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to look on the saving committee, especially this is my company.
Thank you.
Most of y'all know me and Tom and I have been in resident here for many years. In two thousand, we started a wireless internet company before any of the other players had high speed internet services in town. We have a very similar agreement with a lot of other cities in the area, Philly, Ashington, some other private water supply districts and stuff. But the basic system is, is that we're providing services to the residents in town. In exchange for utilizing the water towers to get our antennas up high enough to not have the building laying down our own towers. We're offering free wifi services for the civic center and any of the city buildings. If you want to do it in City Hall, we'll do City Hall, Fire Department. We've done them all in the past, but with different councils and different affairs and different leadership and stuff. Some of them moved to other services that you're actually paying for now. Whereas we would be offering that service and, I mean, it's in the contract already or in the, in the previous contract. Basically, what this is, is a renewal. The existing contract was a little outdated and we reworded a few things. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
And just so you know, Bobby's reviewed it and he's okay with it. They worked together to make sure that it was, that everything was good for the city in the contract.
Does it change his term?
Changed the term?
Changed the term. There was a, there was a couple, there was a clause in there that had an exclusivity clause. I had to remove that. I think the original term was five years with automatic renewals every five years. Rather than doing an automatic renewal, we did a ten year term. But just some minor wording, head changes and such like that.
I already changed it while we asked them before they reviewed it.
The contract's for you?
It's for ten years. Well, the previous contract was an exclusive contract. Nobody else could come in and ask for the same thing. This was not exclusive. So somebody else wanted to go in and ask.
The exclusive contract, the clause basically said that nobody else could put any wires going up there without going through us. Because we didn't want to, get somebody else put something up there that's going to interfere with us. So basically what we did was we took, we changed that around where basically anything else goes up there, we're all going to get the other, come up to the plan and work it out here for each other.
And this is secured wifi, right? Secured?
It's secured.
Yes, yes.
Where are the towers, I mean, where are they going to be located at?
They're already there.
Oh.
It's on the, we call it the east tower and west tower, but it's the one by the, the two elevated storage tanks.
The elevator tanks.
The big tanks.
Hector and Colorado.
You know, now that you're talking about the lights, that light? You know, now, now we're talking about the lights, that light?
They, they can light, too.
It hasn't been working.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I'll, I'll, I'll do it. So I, so I talked to a company representative about that.
It's actually a liability.
Well, actually, the, the FAA doesn't require us to have them on there based on the height level. But it's good to have them on there, they're having to change that or we may have to have them on there. But part of the problem with it is the wiring that's up there, um, uh, we had a, I think, it might have been our divers damage the wire. So we gotta get the wire repaired, uh, but that is one of the things they do is they change out the light bulb switches. So we're working on getting light bulbs fixed right now.
FAA requirements are two hundred feet to, to, in, above two hundred feet, you have to have light, neither one of those towers are above two hundred feet.
One eighty and one forty? Right? One eighty, one sixty, something like that.
Where you locate it?
Yeah. We're working on it, and we're gonna fix it.
I can mention one thing, Mayor. The showman indicated they had wanted, uh, the automatic rules, which we, we took out. Every change that I did suggest that were kind enough to, to simply reach it. Even though you're looking at a potential ten-year term, and that's a third question, and, and, and certainly it's up to the council to decide which way to go. There is a provision in the contract that if you're not happy with them, uh, that, uh, the contract can be terminated with six months' notice. We wanted to do that to give you as much flexibility as possible. Uh, so if they keep you happy, then they're gonna be okay, but if you're not happy, uh, the, the ten years actually becomes, uh, six months' with notice. But, uh, to their credit, uh, whatever we suggested, they agreed to.
And are we happy?
The, the, I mean, it was one of the certain, again, that's, you know, it, it was put in, um, previous administration took it. Wired everything instead because they weren't, I don't know, whatever. Um, we put it in the civic center, what was one in the civic center, actually, what was one in the civic center is gonna be a two, two-faced deal, there's a secure role there for staff. And for council to use, it's different than the one for the general public. Um, that's gonna be great when we get that set up over there. Up and off, we're, we're talking about the fire department, because the fire department there, it, it does cost us quite a bit for internet there, and there aren't anybody over there, so this will be sufficient for them. Uh, but we've got ten people in here trying to do stuff, you know, that's a little bit different story. The Main Street, you know, put it on, on this building so we can have it on Main Street, maybe look at the sports complex, and we add internet at the sports complex for stuff out there. What we're doing with the stuff around, maybe some first Fridays, uh, market days, those people have an access to Wi-Fi so they can run a car, blow those vendors out. That's gonna, that opens the door for a lot more people that are gonna wanna be here because they've got something else to use. I, I think this is gonna be great. We just need to start utilizing the contract that previous administrations weren't utilizing.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Yes.
No more discussion, you can entertain a motion to address this item, please?
If you approve, we include Wi-Fi unanimously.
Okay, there is our motion on the table by Councilman Ed Anandis, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Councilman Van Briscoe. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Sixty-one, sustain. Alrighty, we moving on to. Discussion of House Action Regarding City Hall Annex Building. Entertain a motion to discuss, please?
Motion to discuss.
All in favor?
Madam Mayor, if I sort of wrong again. If there's one of the previous meetings, uh, Craig Forsyth passed out the layouts, proposed the city hydra. Uh, did anybody have any questions, did the judge have a chance to go through the layouts, or?
What, what are the offices, what, do these offices?
We have an office.
So, if you're lucky, lucky enough, uh, everything on the left side would be a municipal court into. Uh, because we basically have a municipal court working out of a closet at the library. So the reception work area and the two offices in the back would be for the municipal judges and the court clerks. Uh, the other four offices that are over on that side, the office in the corner, we talked about having, uh, uh. What's the word I'm looking for? Uh. Remote office for the police department. Uh, if they have a rest or something over here on this side of town, they don't have to go all the way back over there to do their paperwork, they can come here and do it before they go into the jail. Uh, and then, huh? Yeah, substation, that's what I was looking for. A substation for the PD that's closer at the same time, being able to get that process a little bit quicker. Uh, one of those offices over there would be an office for mayor and council to use. Uh, if you wanna come in and keep office hours or meet with people or whatever, then that office will be available for that as well. And then the other two offices for whatever. One of the discussions that we had a little bit along the way was about potentially just leaving those two. Um, so on that right side, having two offices, one for the PD and one for mayor and council in that building. And removing those others and moving that, the, the room itself for the meetings, moving it all the way back to the back wall. And making it bigger, so if we have, cause like tonight, I mean, we had a lot of people that show up, and every once in a while, we do get a significant number to show up. And making that room bigger, I mean, that's important, sometimes they have a lot of extra people show up as well. So, um, if nothing else, tonight, I mean, what I would like you guys to do is, is, you know. Take a good look at it, and, you know, if there's something else that you see or something, or maybe we come back at the next meeting with if you guys have any suggestions. I mean, if you got this in the last meeting, we really, we really didn't get a chance to talk about it because it was just thrown, you know, maybe it down on the agenda. And this is the first time we really had a chance to talk about it. Uh, so I wanted to make sure that you guys had a chance to ask questions or, or say, you know, hey, I've never seen this, or I've never seen that, or something different.
Reception work area?
Reception work area would be where the, the, the main court clerk sit. The main, the main court clerk will sit in that area.
What's the, gonna be the seat passing in the current drawing, one of the courtroom? It's not even bigger than it is there right here.
It's got seventy. Seventy-five seats. This one shows.
Thirty-five, thirty-five and seven.
Seventy seats? Uh, the front would be different, obviously, it'd be more spread out.
See, the proposal, did, did it include all the fresh?
No, I don't think it includes any fresh.
It's bonus?
You can't see me, man.
Well, I, I would assume the diaphragm, right? I mean, it's, it's, so a lot of, of the, of the diaphragm.
And it's elevated?
It's elevated, yes.
Now, as far as the furniture building, that all, all the fact of the city here.
Well, you know, the judge, I mean, they all have furniture, you know, everybody has furniture, we'd have to do some furniture over here, but it's, I mean, it's not. Uh, the chairs would be, you know, winged out, you know. And I don't think the furniture budget's gonna be checked out, I guess, with what we have right here.
So, the furniture budget, I mean, depending on the price of the building comes up, if there's.
Yeah, there may be plenty of. Was that possible? Especially, we talked about that a little bit, if we did, uh, leave eight, two of those offices and move it the rest of the way back and make that a little bit bigger. Uh, then it's not only for people, not only for it to have a meeting, but it would be another room that would be bigger, it could be used for community functions, some kind as well. Um, and that, you know, you're taking off some finished product, and then that's probably the reduced cost a little bit as well.
Especially if you don't need that office space, right? Because the majority of these staffs can be here.
Would you be able to put a partition?
I mean, from the. To split that room? We talked about that a while, too. About making a split right out of the building.
So do you guys?
Yeah, partition instead of those two offices.
Yeah, we talked, we talked about, just like we had with the PD, they have those partitions in there, let's, let's say, kind of partitioned.
It's against you.
Yes. We have those, uh, according to.
Madam Mayor. Um, how many square feet?
Approximately five thousand, I guess. Four, five hundred, five thousand, depending on where.
Yeah.
So you have to be how, what percentage of that amount? So, so what is the percentage of that amount? That would be about thirty percent?
About thirty percent. Because there's the layout of the first sheet. And we have a building, so all this other, the south side, that's gonna be physical, it'll go.
I didn't see parking.
Parking is on this side with two ADA accessible spots.
But it's thirty-eight hundred square feet, really.
No, forty-five, five thousand.
Seventy-six, seventy-six times fifty.
I think it's thirty.
Yeah.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, yes.
It's pretty small.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need it, we need it, we thought it was gonna be five to six thousand square.
That's thirty, that's thirty, that's thirty.
I said make the, make them bigger.
Yeah. That's our problem now, if we build another building where we can't fit the citizens when they wanna come in.
We both, community meetings and.
I want a bigger room, bigger too.
Hmm?
I want a bigger room, bigger too.
So, so the courtroom's now, is there?
All the way back.
All the way back to the back wall.
Yes, all the way to the back door.
Four offices to two. And it's all the way to the back wall.
Yeah, you're probably not just the square footage.
Ninety by.
Fifty, ninety by fifty would be.
Eight by sixty.
Or ninety by fifty would be forty-five hundred.
Eight by sixty, forty-eight. Seventy-five.
Seventy-six. If you went, if you, but if you went ninety by fifty, Robert, then you're extending that big room another twenty feet. So you could actually. And you could actually leave the office, and that's, that room's gonna be pretty big. And that gives you more room up here on this, on the side, or one of those sides, to move your, for additional storage.
Which really, from the design standpoint, is not gonna be an issue, the only thing that we don't wanna run into is that. Based on the prices that we've seen, uh, for the first week. And the amount of budget you have available, we're estimating you're gonna get somewhere in the neighborhood fifty times. So, but I don't see an issue with just us putting together two court tents. Where if we can get the forty-five hundred and five thousand square feet, we increase the size of the courtroom and leave in the office space. But if we can't, if we didn't fall within the budget, then we'll drop off the office space.
And have them.
And add the courtroom.
I guess.
That way we have the option to go off the bid, and if it comes in over, then. We don't have to go back out and redo the property.
It's just, it's just hard, hard to like, isn't it?
Yeah.
This is foundation.
Cause technically.
The foundation.
Your foundation, your villa.
I don't know if they mean this, because we have nowhere to be.
It's all, it's all the engineer.
Yeah, just to clarify, just to clarify, we're just, this is just an estimate based on. Past projects when you put out the bid, it's coming from us and saying, we're not building it, we're just giving you an estimate of what we think you can build for the budget that you have available. You know, we're gonna put out the bids, and whatever the market gives at the time, hopefully, you know, you get a couple contractors that, that come in and give us several bids, and we might be able to make the building bigger.
If, to that point, if you look at the bid we did on the civic center, you know, we had one, one bid, we had one that was basically. One from Cash Bill was the one that got it, his bid was three hundred thousand dollars, and everybody else, because those San Antonio companies were still off on the coast, doing all the marketing. But he wanted to work at home, so he got some, a really favorable bid, although he did there, and I think there's, I mean, he liked working, so I think there's a good chance we may see him or another one or two local ones bid. Local within our limits bid, and that would really help us with the cost.
We just wanna come and say, well, you haven't been in on the budget for building. And then. Say, somebody says you're gonna get five thousand per feet, you can come back. And tell you that you're not.
It will be smaller than that.
Yeah, I don't know.
We won't be smaller. Well, we've got six hundred and some thousand sitting in there, and a hundred, one point two million sitting in TML. Uh, so whatever, once we get those, you know, parts, then whatever's left, we'll be able to afford that.
But, but as far as the construction cost, I think we're at about a bid of, right? Close to a million, and we're seeing prices, construction prices, over two hundred thousand, how many, two hundred? I think you're over nine, two hundred dollars per foot.
But that's stick, it's out of steel.
That's steel.
The top, I mean, and people bring up, well, you can go with a, with a metal building, and with a sod of, of. Rave or rock, but then really what costs the money is to build up inside of that metal building.
And you gotta make it.
Has a foundation.
Foundation, and it's all built up. So even when you look at a metal, metal building versus. Any other type of structure, they're, they're sort of.
That's, that's a million dollars, what, what is the other, eight hundred dollars?
There's, where, where is fifty per thousand feet?
There's eight thousand, there's six hundred thousand in the budget that we got already. Where is fifty-four hundred? Yeah, well, there, that's true, we still got some work to do there, but we got one point two billion sitting together. Once we get started.
But we could do two floor plans and, and do an alternate bidding.
Yeah, that's always gonna have to be done.
In other words, we'll have a court tent this size, with the courtroom standing out to this, this back wall. South wall through about that.
It'll be a south wall.
And then we'll have another courtroom with the courtroom that's that same size.
But twenty feet longer building.
Yeah, twenty foot longer building, which is put this office here.
Why don't you give me a bigger floor plan, see what you can do?
That, that's the basic, notice, yeah, the basic thing would be the bigger building.
Yeah.
See what we can get.
And the ad also be the smaller.
And the ad also be the smaller. We added an alternative bid, would be the smaller.
Now, give them the alternative, yeah.
If that's, if that's the direction you wanna go, but then what happens with that is that we just have to put out the busy bid. As long as the council will be aware of it, if it comes in over, then we just have to put it out for busy bid, I don't have an issue with that. Oh. And, and you're right, you might get a better bid that way.
And, and TML will see that we're actively pursuing it, so that's gonna keep them happy.
I'll, I'll, I'll follow that, as long as we're all aware of it, if they might come in and do a bit higher than anticipated.
Seven twenty.
And at that time, I might be able to spend a little more money and go to the truck and then. If you can.
I would agree.
Yes, yes, Councilman Briscoe.
One, one thing, I, I think, I know we've got all that storage up there, we got storage up here, but it is, uh, it, it kind of. I don't want to be, we're colossal, we're a colossal stake, we're gonna do, we're gonna have some storage in it, I mean, other. We've done it before, we've, we've got some closets, but especially if we go big, just, the storage is critical of some, some sort, too, that, that's my input. The other part is, um.
Three thousand square feet.
Essentially, we have that size of building, we need probably reserve thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars of furniture. We need to put some.
Furniture, yes, I agree.
As far as the storage, though, most of those larger storage areas that are built in this, were required to have secure storage for this floor. So that stuff on, on the north end of the building, that's all that required secure storage for this floor.
I would recommend this building, or maybe another building for storage, I'm just, you can.
Yeah, we don't want storage.
You want a two hundred and something dollars worth of building.
For storage.
You gotta figure out.
Especially if you have.
Oh, I can, it's, it's storage.
Yeah, we do.
The rest, we don't have storage for everybody in person.
So, so the direction the council is, they're getting the bigger building. Increase the courtroom size, and leave the office space in the back, so we can put that out for this. And then just see where that comes in, as far as the policy.
Entertain a motion, please?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we, uh, swap, doesn't mean with, uh, providing a, a plan that's seen stipulated, smaller and larger, that's probably say that.
Just right now, the larger one, just right now.
Larger.
Larger.
Okay, may I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries.
So I have to revise this, and then send it out again, if you're just for your.
Okay, Discussion of House Action Establishing a Date for City Council Retreat. Actually, I didn't need to, entertain a motion to discuss, please?
If you'd discuss.
All in favor? Okay.
Madam Mayor, Council, this came over the last, at the last council meeting, we put it on the agenda for tonight. Um, obviously, between now and the time we get back from TML, not much room in there to fit in much else, we'll still have a budget meeting tomorrow night. Uh, we have a budget meeting next Monday, which may have to be, um, recessed and finished up on Tuesday. Uh, so we're, we're pretty tied up for the rest of this month. October the eighth, now is when we have the next joint meeting with Dilly and the county in, in Dilly. Um, and then on the ninth, when we first came out. Um, we'll, we'll be moving our regular meeting for October, as we always do, from the second Tuesday to Thursday, it will be gone on the second Tuesday. So the sixteenth is already set as the meeting date as well. So I would recommend, if you guys wanna try to do it, I, I, it would be nice to do it shortly after TML, when you guys will just come back and have the classes and everything's fresh. Just set it sometime the week of October twenty-second through the twenty-sixth. Um, what we did last time was we tried to look for a Saturday, where we could do it at eight-hour retreat, and that didn't really work out, so we did two four-hour nights. Uh, but that's entirely up to you guys, but I will, if you want, if we're gonna try to do this, I think we need to get it set for that timeframe. Budget will be done, everything will be done, we can actually sit down and talk about. If somebody guys wanna talk about the retreat, so I would suggest that week of the twenty-second through the twenty-sixth, maybe the twenty-third or twenty-fifth, that's Tuesday, Thursday.
Um, I have a question, when are we gonna get together, are we writing that, that?
I know, we, we'll get to that afterwards, we'll, we'll get to that. Our, our. Our, our, our presentation at T M L.
I bet you guys have it all worked. My, my speaker. Already got you registered, you're already listed as speaker. I got you. I'll give you, I'll give you a finer point than that too.
What am I supposed to say?
I know.
You got two minutes of notice to start the last meeting, you did fine. Um, so if you guys wanna try to do it, the twenty-third, twenty-fifth, Tuesday, Thursday, of that week after, the, the week we get back, we'll have a regular on that Tuesday. You could do it Thursday and the following Tuesday, uh, Tuesday, Thursday, when are you guys working?
We're doing it two days.
Yeah, that's what we did last night, those two nights. One night we basically talked about, um, priorities and that kinda stuff, and the other night we talked about, um.
Can we do it on a Monday day? Is it possible?
We do, yeah, we do it one night, it's not, it's not, or do you want to? One day? Like a Saturday?
I don't, I don't have a problem with Saturdays.
I need you guys.
So, October twenty-seventh? October twentieth? October twentieth, guys? Twenty-seventh? You out from the seventeenth to the thirty-first? Are you talking hunting season?
All the way over there, aren't you? What about the first?
What about the sixth?
I don't know. And then that's. November sixth, that's the first Tuesday of November, will be the week before the council meeting.
October sixth.
October sixth. Whatever you guys wanna do, we'll make work.
Okay, done.
October sixth, what's that?
Start at nine?
Start at nine o'clock? And you guys will do a polybreak like we did last time, totally more of a straight up. So if you'll, motion to Senate, we'll go.
Okay, done.
At the library.
We're gonna bring our lunch and stuff. We're gonna bring our lunch.
It's okay, we're gonna do. Yes. Okay, I'm sorry, where are we?
Motion, so set that date in time.
Okay, need to entertain a motion to set that date in time, guys. Ready? The October.
October sixth.
Ninety AM library.
Ninety AM.
Library.
Library.
There's, there's a motion. We have a second. Keep it here, it's time. Councilman. Ganderah. Okay, all in favor? Motion carries.
Yes, sir, we will.
Okay, discussion and possible regarding pending application for city of Pierceville boards and commissions. Action item, intertain a motion to discuss, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Madam Mayor, Council, one application for this time, um, uh, Billy Neil, Brian, I know this was, he was ninety-six years old, and he won't be on any boards and commissions anymore. Uh, so he resigned from the ethics commission. So we have a standing, uh, opening on the ethics commission. We have an application, uh, for the ethics commission from Brian Biker. Um, the mayor and I both reviewed it and signed off on it, so if you guys want to approve it, it's a serve as, to serve out the rest of Billy Neil's term on the ethics commission.
Okay, entertain a motion, please.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to accept Brian Biker's replacement of Billy Neil on the ethics.
Motion on the table, may I have a second?
Sorry.
All in favor? Motion carries. Item, you. Do we have to discuss this again?
Yes. You're on you.
Uh, discussion of possible action regarding ordinance number two zero one eight, that's zero nine, that's zero one, designated West Panya Street between Willow and Gobia, Gobia Street as a one-way street. Intertain a motion to discuss, please. May I have a second? All in favor? Get shorter.
Uh, Madam Mayor, Council, I don't know how, how I should, um, real quick, uh, this is a request from our team of police related to full traffic around ten floors during school hours. Mr. Guerrero will talk to you about it. Did you read one?
Oh, she's gonna pull up the map, we'll get to prove the maps. Uh, the problem we're having right now is that whenever it's school hours and the kids are getting dropped off or being picked up, they park on the east and west side of the street, and it gets yeah, Benja Street completely congested. What then parking on the side of the street, what ends up happening is that if a car's trying to go westbound, the one that's trying to go eastbound has to completely wait until they pass and it gets completely congested over there. Um, what the chief was asking is that we can make Benja a one-way heading west, which would end up being they complete you all the way around the school district. Because on Willow, north, uh, Willow, it's already a one-way heading south, and then Gobia Street, it's already a one-way heading north. So, it would be, uh, right here, just making this, this section right here, uh, the one-way, yes. It's gonna be a whole, uh, horseshoe route.
So east and west streets around, they're already one-way during that time. This is where everything's getting messed up, and this would be a more route around the school.
This is one-way during school hours, it's not.
This is school hours, that's it.
Tomorrow's school days.
Eight to nine thirty at mid, and then those, uh, three to four thirty.
That's correct.
Monday to Friday.
Seven thirty. Seven thirty in the morning, three, four thirty in the afternoon, school days.
Motion? Go through, okay? Okay, all in favor? Motion carries, unanimous, please. Alrighty, discussion of possible action regarding ordinance number two zero one eight, that's zero nine, that's zero two, amendment adopted budget for the fiscal year October first, twenty seventeen. Action item, intertain a motion to discuss, please. May I have a second? All in favor? Yes.
Madam Mayor, Council, uh, this, uh, budget amendment request is to transfer the rest of the money that we need from the hot fund, the lot fund itself, into the current, um, hot budget, uh, to cover a change that we were forced to deal with in the, the renovation of the civic center. When Medina Electric came to put in our power, um, to do very big for the deal, we had a four hundred amp service in there, and Medina Electric refused to connect it with a four amp service, and made us put in a six hundred amp service. Uh, so that increased our cost, uh, and no, no, like, one, the contractor's fault, neither Medina Electric made us do it. And we added one, we added three additional lights in the park hall, because we didn't have enough lights in the park hall, uh, on a chain. So it all fit within, within the, the bounds of the, of the contract, and what we could do with chain order, when we had to put that service in early, it would be, you know. How many dollars would they, like, turn out?
Thirty-four thousand.
Thirty-four thousand, seven hundred forty-six dollars.
I have to make a motion that would improve the, the two zero one eight, the two zero nine, the two, the new budget to allow the, uh, that's right.
Okay, there's a motion on the table, may I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries, unanimous, please. Alrighty, item six, manager report, make it short.
Thank you. Uh, first item of the second, first Friday event sponsored by the Pierceville Main Street Committee was held on September seventh here on San Marcus Street between Oak and Ash. We have over a hundred people who attended again. Our Maverick cheer team performed, the Maverick football team was in attendance, and we had food vendors and music. The event went very well. Uh, we'll continue to host these events every first Friday in an effort to draw people to our downtowns for our whole downtown business. Next event will be held on October fifth. Uh, our Main Street directors were announced to carry our host business for October currently. Uh, just a heads up, the memory event will be held a couple of dates early on October thirty-first, as we'll be joining with the neighborhood churches in hosting a drunk retreat for Main Street here on City, here in City Hall in the parking lot, uh, that evening. So we, they, they called us and asked us about our neighborhood of um, something else, uh, that Friday night's all football games, so we know we wouldn't have anybody before come out anyway. Uh, so we decided to work with them and see if we get, if we could, uh, get the, get the Main Street businesses to come and do their stuff here in the parking lot, give them a little bit of, of. And she's got some flyers, and she, I think you already have a flyer playing out there. They thought, yeah, yeah, you should have a flyer playing out there. Um, why not, this time we'll let Josie go through and find us a board.
Um, you can receive your financial report, there's two of them, um, that identify everything that's about every month. So it has your fast due utility account, um, your ninety-eighty fast dues, of course, it identifies your debt service, um, payments paid. Uh, right here on your cash on deposits, this is your cash on hand, so your general money had one point five utilities, negative three, four, eight. Um, fire fund seventy-five thousand, your CO, we're currently at two point two. Um, we just gave out the CO bond earlier, um, which we did reference in Congress, that's why it was at one point two, but right now, as of right now, so anything that's been pulled out is at two point two. Uh, whole time auto fund, we have three thirty. Interest and sinking forty-two, police forfeiture ten, and police training, and all your other small funds, which is your major causes, your vitalization fund is a three hundred and twenty-two thousand. Um, if you look at the airborne passes, we have ninety-eight point three eight percent of the budget already collected. So the liquidated passes, the three hundred percent, uh, penalty interest, one twenty-four percent. Your fee sales tax, ninety-three percent, we're waiting on a payment for the, for the end of this school year. Uh, mixed beverage tax, sixty-one percent, franchise fees is a hundred and twenty percent, so we're pretty much on track with what we're gonna pull out this year. Um, and then it also identifies the year-to-date for general fund, your utility fund, it breaks it down for you to identify all costs there. Um, at the bottom, it also identifies your month end for your general fund and your utility sources. Uh, so for the month, for the current month, as of August thirty-first, uh, we were, uh, we were, we had deficit of sixty-two thousand, um, just for the month of bringing in revenues and expenditures. We just do our, some of our bond payments at the end of August, August thirty-first, because our payments are due September first, so some of them have hit, and the rest will hit on. So that's where there's, um. The second report is basically the same thing, it identifies your budget, your year-to-date, your month, your net variable, and then budget, and then identifies. So we're at, currently, with the budget at nine one point six seven percent complete. Um, our total revenue with all our funds, we're at sixty-five, um, I'm sorry. At sixty-five? Well, this one, the sixty-five, because we have the five point four four two for the CO bond, so that's, I mean, that's already been collected, so that's just even in the fund balance, so that's why this projection at the end is off, but the money, we're at the middle. Uh, for your expenditures, um, we should be at the ninety-one percent, and we're at seventy-eight point nine seven percent. So we're all on track for everything, um, in the end of this school year.
Okay, third item, no questions. Third item, library accreditation. The Pierceville Public Library received their notice from the Texas State Library and Archives Commission that the library has, that, that our library has met all the requirements. It will be a fully qualified member of the Texas library system for fiscal the year twenty nineteen. Uh, Mr. McDonald has staffed an excellent job of making sure that we maintain full library standards at that facility each year, and that leadership will attach behind your document. Uh, the twenty nineteen budget, we continue to piece together the additional answers. We need to complete the budget for next fiscal year. With the completion of the joint work session with the city of Dilly and Freo County, and knowing we will not be forced to include a payment for the MS this budget, we can continue to move forward. Uh, the requested R and P, uh, for medical insurance was issued, and the final date will be September seventeenth. Obviously, tomorrow night, we have a bunch of workshops, so with those pieces, we should be able to move forward. Uh, joint work session, the second joint work session between the city of Pierceville City Council, the city of Dilly, City Council, and the Freo County Commission will be held Monday, October eighth, at six P M. in the Dilly City Hall. First meeting held this month as part of the ongoing discussion on the future of the MS program, and Freo County was well attended. Anything we can do to get all the entities on the same page on issues facing folks within our jurisdiction is absolute progress, so I truly hope that these meetings will continue. At some point in these meetings, hopefully, we will get to the point where we can talk about realities and the true, and true equality among local governments, and we'll have the potential for some progress here for that point. Uh, road work, we've begun work on the worst intersection in town. We talked about that earlier, it's part of the project. Uh, this week's first kind of slowed us down a little bit. It looks like we're gonna kind of get a little dry spell, so we can try to drive us faster until the end of the fiscal year. Flags on Main Street, for those of you who did not notice, uh, Ram's Ridaway crew completed the new flag holes on Main Street, and we have all of our flags up along Oak Street for Labor Day. Uh, no issues this time, zero flags fell due to the wind, and they all looked really good. Uh, the Ridaway crew will continue to add in additional holes on San Marcus and Colorado Park for the next holiday, so we can have some more flags up. Annexation phase three, both required hearings for phase three of the annexation, annexation project, we were held last week. We'll have the final annexation ordinance on agenda for consideration at one of our special meetings in the very near future. Um, city-sponsored fundraiser tournament, you guys should also have, apply it out there for the tournament. As requested at the last special meeting, we've begun working with cheerleaders from Pierceville and Dilly High School, who will be traveling overseas in December to represent their hometowns in either London or Rome on Beer's Day and their parades. Fundraiser tournament is scheduled for September thirtieth, beginning at seven thirty A M. in the morning at Sports Park. Uh, we're doing a weekend to help them out and to help them meet their fundraiser goals. The October meeting, just a reminder, the regular meeting of the Pierceville City Council for the month of October will be changed from the second Tuesday, October ninth, to the third Tuesday, October sixteenth, due to the fact that everyone will be traveling to the T M L I N O conference on the day of October. How about?
Just a real quick question. When the cheerleaders come back, can we request that they come make a presentation?
About, about the trip. Yeah, absolutely, we'll tell them about that.
General. Oh, review of bills paid? Have you guys reviewed the bills paid? Okay. Okay. General announcements? General announcement? That was the manager's report? General announcements? Any inquiries for council members? Anything you want on the next agenda or regular?
I was, uh, through these rainy rainy days about, um, the water flooding over there on Roosevelt Street that ends on Main Street. Oh, there. I had to drive out there to actually see it myself, and it's.
Roosevelt, where?
Roosevelt and East Beans.
Isn't, isn't that the kitchen you saw tonight? That wasn't Roosevelt, that was what.
That was the, that was the.
Hat?
That was the.
So, still, they had a Roosevelt. Had a whole area.
Two more to agree, we'll put on the agenda.
We need two more to agree, to put it on the agenda.
What about it?
The flood, the, the water, just, it floods out there bad.
Plan of action, too.
There's no water drainage out there or anything where the water just sits there.
That discussion, if you agree.
Discussion.
We have a discussion then.
We have to.
We'll go on for a session.
Okay. Is that it? Motion to.
Are you, are you gonna put yourself on the? Every quarter, I thought you were gonna put yourself on the. With the executive session.
Second. That's it? Motion to, uh, to.
No, because where you guys already did that.
I made a motion, need your.
Okay, second, all in favor? Good night, y'all.